Evening, everybody. Welcome to the San Carlos City Council and successor agency to the redevelopment agency meeting of May 11th, 2015. Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I was going to ask if there were any changes to the order of agenda, but I actually know that there are eight changes to the order of the agenda. So what we're going to do is we are going to move item 10A before the public hearing. And is there anybody else who would like to propose a change to the order of the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. I need to -- well, normally I would ask for a report from the closed session, but our city attorney recused himself from our closed session. And I'm not sure -- Greg, maybe you can help me if -- does the assistant city manager give us the report?
There's no report from closed session.
Thank you, Tara. And by the way, the reason that Tara is here tonight is because our city manager couldn't be here, and Tara is filling in for him. So we promise not to be too hard on you. All right. Next is our council communications and announcements. These are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence they've received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. All right. Let's start with Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I have anything tonight. If I think of something while the other ones are speaking, I'll come up with it. But I don't think I have anything.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. I wanted to say that I enjoyed kicking off the council presence at Hot Harvest Nights last Thursday evening. It was a little breezy, but it was good turnout, and everybody seemed to be having a good time. And I can personally attest to the quality of the nectarines that were on sale that night. I'd also like to congratulate the school district on its successful Measure P parcel tax. The final vote tally was announced this morning by the Office of Elections. They came in at about 68.5%, so only a little bit above the two-thirds supermajority, but getting a supermajority at all is a good sign. So it's great the community is still supporting schools. And I think we all received a copy of an email from Sam Hersberg that was basically requesting that we agendize a discussion of a number of items that a community meeting on the east side had come up with about things that they'd like to see done to improve the quality of life on the east side. And I've told Sam that I don't necessarily support every item that's on that list, but I certainly support the idea of having staff agendize it for us if there's anybody else in the dais who would concur with that. But I'd like to see us do it.
I'm open to it as well. I mean, I think I kind of wanted to sit down with Sam and figure out how to prioritize that list of 20 and figure out what, you know -- so I'm a little bit concerned about overwhelming staff with 12 or 20 different items. So I'm certainly open to discuss it, and I think there were a lot of good ideas on there. It's just a question as to what's the correct form? Do we bring them all back? Do we spend some time working through them and figure out what's the most important thing?
For what it's worth, just to be clear, what I was actually thinking of is not tasking them with an in-depth study of each of the 20 items for exactly the reason you're talking about.
Right.
But to have it brought back to the council so that we could discuss it and see which, if any, items on there we do want them to study, you know, give direction, basically.
Okay. So are you then seconding that?
Yeah.
Or also in favor of it?
Yeah, I'll say I'm in favor of it.
Okay. All right. Any response, Bob?
The only issue is, I mean, a couple of the items staff is already working on. There was responses, you know, the items -- I got the same letter. The responses were listed, you know, on the second page. Like I said, we're working on permits, we're working on large vehicles. The flooding is endemic to the entire city, including the west side. I don't know quite where we go with that. It's certainly in plans. The crossings and so on, I think a lot of it is going to be affected by how the transit village gets going, you know, assuming it starts. I don't know, I mean, to have people come up and say that we should do this, okay, that's great. And we say, well, we really can't, or, you know, whatever. Or staff says, well, how do you want us to prioritize this or that? I'm -- whatever. I'm not necessarily in favor of agendizing it. I wrote back a letter explaining how I thought it should go, but it's up to you.
All right. Well, I think I've also met with Sam, had lunch with him, and discussed these items. And I think it actually originated with a list that he came up with and sent to me. And I think there's a lot of things that we have done, we are planning on doing, some things we can't do. But maybe it might be helpful if we had, you know, sort of a more high-level formal look at it. At least we can talk about it, put it on the agenda, talk about it, and then decide how we're going to proceed to address those issues. Maybe just the, you know, the sort of the public raising the profile of this may go a long way to getting some of these issues answered a little bit more public way. So I think you've got direction that'll show up on a future agenda. Okay?
Thank you. Everyone just have one other quick item, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Some of you may have seen an interview that I was participating in on Friday evening. But just for the rest of the public, I would like everybody to be aware that I have taken the public position that, given the continuing set of anomalies that keep being discovered every time PG&E digs down to check out line 147 for one reason or another, I think we're at four or five and counting at this point, it's my considered opinion that the reasonable and prudent thing to do is to keep that line shut down, except during the period of time when it needs to be operating so that we can run the robot pig through it to study the line, because the pig is propelled by gas pressure, so we actually have to have it operational to gather the data. But both before and after that point, until we've verified that that line is safe, I'd like to see the line shut down, because I think that's the reasonable and prudent thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mark? Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll start by saying to thank Mark for his leadership on the PG&E issue. I know, you know, he spent a lot of time last week when, you know, PG&E, in this case, did the right thing, which is they found some structural problems with the pipe, and they let the city know. And Mark was out there and vocal, and I think to good effect on behalf of the city. I have a number of items. I'll try to go through them quickly. On the proposed bond measure for Black Mountain, Mark and I both attended a bond subcommittee where we're working on public outreach and a lot of the logistics in getting preparation for that bond measure. I also attended a Chamber of Commerce Public Affairs meeting where Jeff gave a presentation on the Black Mountain proposal to the business community, which he did a great job. I attended a nice little event at the Reading Bug on Laurel Street. Senator -- State Senator Jerry Hill picked the Reading Bug as his Small Business of the Year. Each state senator picks a small business from their district and gives them a recognition, and then they all go -- all of the small business owners go to Sacramento, and they sit around and have a nice lunch and talk about small business issues. And so out of the million-plus constituents, Jerry Hill picked the Reading Bug, which I think is a great institution. My kids go there all the time, and there was a nice ceremony with Diane and Lawrence Havich, the owners. I also attended a luncheon for -- hosted by SAMCDO, which is the San Mateo County Economic Development Association, to discuss the proposed Community Choice Aggregation, which is now being called Community Choice Energy Project, which is essentially a project which San Carlos has agreed to at least take the initial step to participate in, where the county would pool its resources and purchase electricity, green electricity, on the open market, and provide that as a choice to consumers. We had speakers from Marin County and Sonoma County, who have both -- both counties have done this, and they presented, which, you know, at first blush doesn't sound possible, but actually they're providing greener power to their -- to both residential and commercial customers at a lower cost than the PG&E alternative, which was great. I was sworn in as a new member of the San Mateo County Transportation Authority this past week. I was elected by the City Selection Committee, which is made up of the mayors of the county, and I represent now the South County, which is the cities from San Carlos to the south in San Mateo County. And so that's a great honor and privilege to serve on that board. And there's a lot of challenging transportation issues for the whole Bay Area, particularly along the 101 corridor, so I'm looking forward to working on that. I'm a member of the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Board, and we had a board meeting this morning. The board represents 12 libraries, including San Carlos Library. And when we looked at the budget, the San Carlos is -- or, excuse me, the library board is in remarkable financial health, so much so that we are ramping up capital construction and doing a lot of renovations of libraries all around the county, which is very exciting. Lastly, I wanted to say -- well, two last sort of more personal things. One is that I'm the -- I serve on the San Mateo County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery Commission, and I've done that for many years. May is Mental Health Month in the county, and I think in the nation. And it's an opportunity for us to talk about mental health issues and to try and reduce stigma around mental health. A lot of people struggle with mental illness, but they don't seek the treatment that they need because of stigma in society. At our last meeting last week, we gave out awards to people who had had a big impact on the community, serving their community. I had an opportunity to give an award to the San Mateo Police Department, and it was a nice event. And lastly, yesterday was Mother's Day. As I sit here today at this moment, I think my wife is reading to my children and putting them to bed and making it so that I can be here. So I want to send an appreciation to all the mothers out there. I had an opportunity this weekend to see -- spend time with my wife, my mother, my mother-in-law, and it was my grandmother's 90th birthday, and she's had a huge impact on my life. And so I wanted to say happy birthday, Grandma. And that's it.
You've been busy. Well, I was gone this last week in Florida visiting my 94-year-old father, but I didn't think I had anything to report, and I thought about all the things that I did the week before I left, because I knew I had to get them done before this last week. So one of the things I participated in, I did it for the second year in a row, is there's this educational program called Ropes or Rights of Passage. I think it's Experience, is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Which was held at St. Charles School. I think it originated in our public schools here, but then St. Charles adopted it, and I was privileged to be a judge in that. And I'm just amazed at what young kids do these days and how creative they can be. So I was very impressed on that and very proud to participate in that. Then on the 30th, we had -- we held our second community open house for the, what we call the Four Corners Working Group. This is an ongoing traffic study that has been trying to solve the problems of the traffic when San Carlos Avenue meets Alameda de los Pulgas between Carlmont High School and Tirolinda Middle School. We had a very good attendance, probably about 50 people or so were there, took a lot of notes, a lot of good input from people. It seems that, you know, people's main concern is the pedestrian traffic. We're considering three alternatives, which will involve roundabouts and sort of funneling pedestrian traffic to certain points, and also closing off a road at the south end of Carlmont High School. All these things are just options that are being considered right now. We still have a ways to go, and even if we approved it tomorrow, I think it would probably still be two or three years before it would actually be built. So that was -- we're finally seeing some progress, and I've been on this committee now for, gosh, three years. And so it's nice to see that we're actually getting somewhere. I think once that's done, the community, both communities, Belmont and San Carlos will benefit from that. And I also want to thank Jay Walters, has attended most, if not all, of our meetings. And I know they're not here tonight and can't hear us, but the representatives of Belmont have been extremely helpful and have contributed in every possible way, and it really is a collaborative effort that we're all very much appreciative of. I also went -- Cameron mentioned the Chamber Roundtable, the Business Roundtable, I think it was, what, a week and a half ago, when Jeff Malby put on a great presentation on Black Mountain. Been to a number of these now, and we are getting closer, hopefully, to making a decision on whether or not we're going to put that bond measure on the ballot. Finally, I went to San Mateo County Energy Watch kickoff event in San Mateo, with myself and the mayor of, let's see, Half Moon Bay and representative from San Mateo, and I believe we had -- we didn't have one from -- oh, Redwood City. We had a representative from Redwood City as well. And what this Energy Watch is, it's a program that -- it's an incentive program that PG&E has started to assist small business in becoming more energy efficient. So what they do is they start with an assessment, they go into the business, and they analyze everything that uses any kind of energy, whether it's, you know, a fluorescent light or a freezer in a restaurant or whatever. And then they then come back with a sort of a list of recommendations. And PG&E also has rebates that they offer the business owners, so they get a lot of these improvements to their businesses and retrofits can be -- can get them anywhere from about 30% off the cost of the repairs and the renovations up to 100%. There are a couple of businesses that, because of the way they were before and the rebates they were eligible for, the rebates offset all of the effort that they put into it and all the work they put in and the money they spent. And so it's -- this is a program that we've -- we, as a city, have signed on to, and we're hoping that it'll spread and really create a great energy saving for all of our small businesses on the peninsula. All right. And lastly, I also want to thank Mark for his efforts over the weekend and, you know, the ongoing issue with PG&E. That seems to be a problem that we're going to continue to work on for a while. The primary interest of every council member and every city employee, obviously, is the safety of our citizens. And we just want everybody to know that we are not ignoring that, and we are pressing PG&E and the PUC to take whatever steps they need to take so that our people are safe. Okay. Moving on, are there any staff comments or city administrative business?
Yes, there are. A couple of items. The first one is the launch that we'd like to announce of Informed San Carlos. This is a community response management program, which will allow residents to contact the city via mobile device as well as online. We encourage everyone to have a look. Go onto your app, either on Apple or your Android, and download the app, and you can send us requests, take pictures of a pothole, anything that you'd like to do. And so far, we've received a few requests, and they're being processed quickly. So we're really looking forward to this program. The other item I had was just -- a couple of you have already mentioned PG&E, and I just thought I'd provide a little bit of an update of what's happening as of today. So PG&E is continuing with the retrofit work to prepare line 147 for inline inspection. And they did reduce the pressure to 165 PSI when they discovered the damaged section of pipe last week. The city asked for PG&E to reduce that to zero, which PG&E fortunately agreed to do. And so the line is currently -- there's no pressure in the line. On Saturday, they removed the damaged section of pipe, and the CPUC is currently conducting an investigation of what caused the damage. During the investigation, PG&E will not be doing any more -- they're going to finish the work they're doing to fix the line, but they'll not do any more work towards doing any kind of inline inspection until the CPUC indicates that it's okay to do so. Also, the CPUC asked for PG&E to reduce the operating pressure to 20%, but the city will be asking for more. And this will be after they get back up and running. We've asked for it to be reduced. The pigging will take place after the investigation, which we don't have any information on at this point how long that will be. And staff will keep the council and the community informed as we learn more. And that's my report.
All right. Thanks, Tara. Moving on to presentations.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one more communication announcement?
Certainly.
I got a text from a viewer at home who reminded me to announce that this weekend is the 35th anniversary of Hometown Days, and there's a lot of great activities for the whole community, and we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy.
All right.
Thanks.
We'll all be there, hopefully. Okay. Anything else? Okay. We have got a couple of proclamations tonight, and let me come around and do those. We do these proclamations quite often because they recognize various -- the accomplishments of various groups and organizations that exist in San Carlos. Tonight is kind of nice that we are going to be recognizing a couple of programs that are really what our own people do. And the first one is that this is May 17 through the 23rd is coming up, and it is going to be National Public Works Week. And I want to say -- Jay Walters is right here. Jay, if you'd just come on up for a second. We've had lots of public works directors over the years, almost all of them predated me. And I got to tell you, I am very lucky that we have one of the most competent and intelligent and knowledgeable directors of public works that I think the city's ever had. And so, Jay, I want to thank you, and there is a -- make sure I give you the right one. Anyway, we're just very grateful that you do what you do, and you keep your eye on the ball, and you almost never take it off, so we're happy about that. And I just want to present this to you. This is an appreciation to the city council and the city. And also want to know, maybe there might be some -- a couple of words you might want to let the audience know about.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this recognition and for those very kind and complimentary words that you had for me. I know we -- when I say "I," I mean my whole staff. We're always working very hard for the city and for our residents to try to do the very best we can possibly do. There's lots of things going on with public works out there, and so we just mentioned the Informed San Carlos app will give us some more things to do, but the key is it will let us know where those things are so we can fix them. So again, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members for this proclamation, and I will share it with our staff out at the Corporation Yard and our engineering unit.
Great. All right. Next, National Police Week is actually this week, May 10 through the 16th, and it's also Peace Officer Memorial Day on May 15th. And apparently, National Police Week was first established by President John F. Kennedy through a presidential proclamation. It says in 1960, but he wasn't president in 1960, so maybe it was shortly thereafter. Maybe it was 1961. But here, to receive the proclamation is our own Greg Rothus, who's been not only our police bureau or our sheriff's bureau chief here in San Carlos since we became part of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, but he was our police chief before that. And Greg's been with us for 25 years or so, something like that. I've known him -- I know I've known him since my kids were in grammar school. And I can't think of a better person to present this to, because Greg is probably the personification of a true professional. Anyway, you might want to say a couple of words?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Police Officer Memorial Week, they kicked off some, obviously, some ceremonies at the National Monument in Washington, DC recently. But we had our own local ceremony here in San Mateo County last Wednesday, where we recognized the men and women in law enforcement who have been killed in the line of duty here in San Mateo County. That memorial and that monument is actually in the San Mateo County History Museum, so if anybody would like to see it, it's there. And I just want to thank you and the rest of the city council for your recognition of the day and for your recognition of the sacrifice of the men and women in law enforcement. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you both. Next up is public comment, and hang on just a second, because I know we have some people who want to speak. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If an item you're speaking on is not on our listed agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The city council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and a formal discussion and input at that time. Okay. It appears that we have one general public comment speaker, and that is Ben Fuller.
First, congratulations to Chief Rothaus and Public Works Director Jay Walter for the accommodations. I'd also like to thank our city council for agendizing the GASC items put together by Sam Hersberg. This was a process that involved the mayor, various council members, the -- excuse me, the city manager and city staff. And so the fact that everyone's working together is great. I wanted to ask you guys for a few things today. One of the things is, we've been talking about this for a few years, and there were some promises made. A meeting was had with Cameron Johnson, city staff, Sam Trans, Public Works Director, et cetera, regarding the garbage over at the train station. And new information has come to light, however. This new information is that the beautiful bulbous and islands that were created were actually done without a garbage contract. And so we've been told that we would just have to wait six months, and garbage would accumulate during that time, and that possibly a new contract could be negotiated after that. But we'd like to suggest perhaps finding a way to solve this as a city beforehand, because the garbage is just accumulating, the weeds are getting worse. And really, what we're looking for is a long-term solution to those bulbous and islands, not just letting the weeds accumulate after four years or whatever a contract, but finding a way to solve these sort of public lands problems, because I can never imagine that homeowners are going to want to clean up those bulbous. This is just really out there in the public. So I don't know what we can do about this. I do want to say, though, that we have a golden opportunity here. I've been told by the city staff, this is sort of a development window that we're entering into right now. We're talking about the hotel, we're talking about new office spaces. And I don't want to make a big deal about this, but I did go over the PAMF issue, and it turned out that $12.5 to $14 million were given, and none of that went to the east side. So we just want to find a way to have a closer nexus between what's happening in our neighborhood and solving a simple thing like picking up garbage from the Caltrain customers and weeding the new bulbous that you so generously provided us. So we really appreciate that. And last thing I'm going to mention is Black Mountain. It's a really exciting thing, there's no doubt about it, and I think we're willing to consider coming behind that. We just want to find a way to get there. And one of the issues is we're basically landlocked over on the east side, and so we just want to find a better way to be able to arrive at some of those areas for pedestrian improvements, et cetera. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben. All right. Would anyone else like to address the council during public comment? Okay. Thank you. All right. Nurse?
Items not on the agenda. If there's an item on the agenda, you'll have plenty of time.
Yeah. This is just general public comment. Okay. Thank you, Bob. Next is the approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we remove items I and R for separate consideration, please.
Okay. I think we need -- anybody else? I think we need, anybody else? We need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through H, J through Q.
A second.
Okay. All right. Any, no ordinances that need to be read, Greg?
That was pulled.
Okay. All right. Okay. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. This is where we normally have item nine, but we agreed on an agenda change, and at this moment, we're going to have 10.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a suggestion that we take at least item I, because I think there's one person.
Oh, did you want to, do you want to deal with that now?
Well, just a suggestion, there's a speaker for that item, I believe, you'll find in your stack.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I don't know what our, if ours is a big deal or not a big deal, I don't know.
No, normally, we.
No, I know we normally have, just a suggestion.
I don't really have a problem with that. Is anybody else?
Nope.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. So, item 8I is adopt an ordinance, 1488, adding Chapter 8.41 to the municipal code to restrict boat and trailer parking. All right. Do we have any?
Report or?
Staff report on that before we listen to public comment?
I didn't present the first time, but I did have a say in drafting the ordinance. The proposed ordinance would add a provision to the municipal code that would regulate parking of trailers and campers and boats in the public right-of-way for overnight purposes. There are some exceptions in the ordinance that overnight, beyond overnight, related to coming and going from vacation would be allowed. Other than that, a permit would be required for overnight parking, and so, there'd be a permit program administered by the Sheriff's Department. The purpose of the ordinance is to address parking of such trailers and campers in the public right-of-way that are using up parking in the residential neighborhoods, and the, what's been happening and has been documented is that currently, there's a 72-hour parking allowed for such registered vehicles, and because of that, because they are a trailer, they are easy to move, and they get relocated every three days, and the trailers and campers and boats stay in the same neighborhood, taking up parking on a permanent basis because of that. So, what we've come up with is a program that mirrors an existing city program that relates to RV parking in the public right-of-way. This is nearly identical to the current provisions for RV parking, except it's being applied to boats and trailers.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Greg?
Did I turn it on?
Oh, yeah, you did. Go ahead.
Greg, so, it's a permitted program. I guess I'm a little confused. So, I have a trailer, let's say. I don't, but let's just say I did. I can go and get a permit, and then I can keep it on the street forever, or what's the?
No, there's some limitations. I'm going to pull up the.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that there are going to be limitations, no matter even if you have a permit.
There's a limitation of number of times per year you can ask for a permit, and it is.
Sorry to put you on the spot like that.
That's all right. No more than two occasions during any 30-day period, so it's fairly generous.
Yes, my question is, how long can you keep it? You get a permit. How long can I keep it now?
It's going to be up for the discretion of the Chief of Police, but normally, it's designed to allow people to work on their vehicle, service their vehicle. It's not to allow parking strictly.
That's what I was trying to get at, the basic part of it. So, let's say I had to repair something, or somebody was visiting or something, and it might be a day or two or something, probably no more than the 72 hours we have now, anyway. And then, you can only get it twice a year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Twice in every, no more than two occasions during any 30-day periods.
I'm sorry, 30-day period. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
And I think the genesis of that is that some trailers are used for recreational purposes all summer, so people might come and go and need to have permits for overnight parking during the summer months, for example.
All right. Greg, it also says here under 8.41.030, it says the permit shall be valid for up to 14 days, or such shorter time is determined by the police chief. So, they have the discretion to issue a permit for up to 14 days?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then it says shall not be renewable until a minimum of, period of six months has passed. So, if somebody uses up their whole 14 days, they got to wait another six months.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Greg? Okay. We do have a speaker, Kim Steinjan?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I respectfully request that you reconsider the ordinance for boat and trailer parking. I understand the desire to control trailer storage on city streets, but the ordinance is too restrictive as written. The penalty of impoundment is too severe. Towing and impoundment fees for trailer, a trailer and its tow vehicle could easily exceed $1,000, and it's not unusual for vehicles to get damaged in the process. This seems excessive for a parking violation and should only be used as a last resort. Our family has a horse trailer. It's stored elsewhere. My daughter is an equestrian athlete and a member of U.S. Pony Club. She's in high school, and these restrictions would not allow her to participate in required activities nor to compete on any kind of a regular athletic schedule. We do not store the trailer there. We do not store a horse on the street in front of our house. We use it only for short trips where the trailer comes home out of storage, it gets loaded, it takes a trip for, say, one to three days would be the typical duration, and then same thing on the way back. We might come back late at night, and then the trailer is there overnight until it can be unloaded the next day. And twice in a, if I'm understanding it properly, we're allowed one overnight twice in a 30-day period, and that would mean one trip, coming and going. So, one trip per month in the summer and competition season just seems light.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify something? What I said earlier is, I was reading from the provision that talks about occasional overnights related to preparing for a trip or something of that nature, but there is an overall two times per year permit with a maximum of 14, other than those occasions when someone is incidentally loading, unloading, or preparing for a trip. So, there's two provisions regarding duration. One is a permit for up to two weeks, twice, up to twice a year, and the other is a more frequent time related to incidental loading, unloading, or preparing for a trip that has the more generous time, two times in a month.
So, Kim's situation is where, you know, they've got these ongoing competitions.
If there was an incident, what I hear being described is, I think, covered under the incidental preparations for trip exception, and that if there were meets or events that were more than twice a month, then she could not be under that exception, but it's possible to fill the gaps with the twice-in-a-year exception. So, in other words, if there were, if there were a, and I'm not aware of the season, excuse me, but if, let's just say during the month of June, there were events every weekend, then permits could be obtained for two of the weekends, and the incidental work could be, incidental times could be used for the other two weekends. But you just couldn't do it, you can't do it every weekend.
Or every month.
Or every month. So, you would have to, you might have to stretch it out. If the season's over two months, you might need to get two permits during that time.
All right. So, I noticed it said 14 days every six months, so that's basically 28 days a year, right?
Right.
And could you divide them up into, say, 14 two-day stretches?
Let me look at how we drafted that. You could, I think the way it's worded is, you can use 14 days over the six months, so they can be spread out, but you'd have to designate what days are covered by your permit.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next, we have Jack Baumgartner. Hello, Jack.
Good evening. I want to say, I'm Jack Baumgartner. I live at 291 Chestnut Street, 30 years, and I'm a former member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I wanted to say that I think it's a great idea to have some limitations on these boat and trailer parkings. We have, having looked at the streets myself a lot, parking is a real problem, and it can be abused. As Kim just stated, I own an RV. It's a trailer, and I store it off the site, not anywhere near. It's stored out at Moffett Field. We go out once a month typically for a weekend with a club in San Mateo, and two or three or maybe four times a year, we'll go for two weeks, three weeks. And when we do that, we need to bring the trailer up and load up. Unfortunately, we have a lot of stuff and a dog and a cat, and we get it all loaded up. We can usually do that in one day, and we're out of there. However, when we come back after a 30- or 40-day trip, there's certain cleanup needs to be done, as you'd understand, cleaning bathrooms, carpets, et cetera, because these things tend to build up. That usually takes, if we arrive back on day one, first off, we don't always know when we're coming back, so the permit thing doesn't work, but the provisions that Mr. Rubens described, where we could have one overnight, two in any 30-day period, would apply really nice. However, it would work a lot better for all of us if we could have a little more than just a few hours to get that thing cleaned up. I don't think there's much difference between one day and, say, two days, two nights. And it's enforcement-wise, it shouldn't make any difference, because you have to watch, the police have to know when that period starts and when it ends, so whether they do it at one day or two days, it shouldn't make any difference that way. I don't think it'll be abused, and I highly recommend that you give us a little more time to get the thing loaded and cleaned up as we come and go. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Next, we, next we have Nicole Massey.
Good evening. No pictures this time, but you may remember when this was first introduced, I was here with the pictures of the two boats that do live on my street on a regular basis. So, I wanted to just take a moment to reiterate my support for this ordinance. I think that unfortunately, there are too many members of our community who are not respectful of their neighbors, like it sounds like many of our other speakers tonight here are. And I think this ordinance really is intended to help those of us who are in neighborhoods where we have people who are parking boats full-time on very narrow streets that are creating safety problems for access to schools and to homes. So, I certainly think it makes sense to consider opportunities to make it work for as many people in the community as possible, but in general, I think an ordinance of this nature is incredibly important to improve some of the safety issues that we're seeing on our city streets. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Let's talk a little bit. Cameron, did you want to get some clarification?
Well, I was going to suggest a course of action and see if my colleagues agree. I mean, I think the case made by the speakers is compelling. The case that this ordinance is designed for is long-term storage. I personally don't think it's intended to penalize somebody for having something in front of their house for 48 hours or 72 hours for occasional use. So, I would be in favor of, in light of the examples, both written that we received and the speakers tonight, to relaxing some of the occasional use provisions a bit to accommodate the kind of occasional uses that were brought up today, and have Greg take another cut at the ordinance and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for Greg. I mean, it seems to me that this is more of an enforcement issue than anything else in a lot of ways, and I don't think Mr. Chief Rothus is going to be running around every five minutes looking for boats, or come to your street, Jack, and go, you're out of here, we're going to tow it for $1,000. I don't think that's the purpose of this. I think you have to have a rule, otherwise, I mean, I sort of agree with you, Mr. Johnson, but I really believe that what he's done is sort of put it right here, and then now it's a matter of how we're going to enforce these rules, and I'm sure that the Sheriff's Department is not going to be, you know, like I said, just can't wait to get one of these. I think it's a matter of information. If I had a situation like this young lady here and had a horse thing, I'd be calling, you know, making a phone call to the chief or to the police department, Sheriff's Department, and saying, hey, this is what my situation is, this is what's going to happen, responsible individual, boom, boom, boom. I don't think it's going to be an issue. I honestly don't. And I think going back and trying to change it around, I think it's just, two days? No, no, that's not enough. We need six, three days? No. I think it's a great one, though, personally, just my opinion, that I think it works well as long as people understand, they just have to let people know what's going on, and I think that's the thing. So, that's my opinion.
And if I could just briefly respond, I mean, I kind of went through the same sort of mental process myself. My feeling, though, is it creates anxiety for the homeowner, because they don't know whether it's going to be enforced or not, and so, it makes them say, well, am I going to have to get a permit? Do I got to go down and talk to the city, et cetera, et cetera? And I think that, you know, we could probably still accomplish everything that we're hoping to accomplish with the ordinance, but make it just clear that, you know, occasional use is fine, so.
Well, again, I don't mean to go back and forth, but we have a 72-hour at one right now, and it doesn't seem to be working for some of people, because people are taking advantage of moving this and moving that. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's a great ordinance. All they have to do is coordinate with the Sheriff's Department. It's a little extra work. I grant you that, an extra phone call of some sort, but I kind of think that if you set the bar, you're going to eliminate 90% of the problems, but anyway.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if I'd be able to get in there with the volley back and forth, so.
Unusual, but.
Yeah, that's okay. No, it was good discussion. I just wanted to, before I make my point, just make, get a clarification from Greg. My understanding, Greg, from when you and I talked about this earlier today, the primary reason that we tightened the window in the ordinance was something you touched on in your discussion, which was, we do have individuals who, in the community, who are basically playing hide the football with the trailers and boats. So, they move them, and then what that puts the deputy in the position of is they'd have to, like, what, document exactly where the boat was two days ago, and that's the.
Those little orange tags or red tags that go on the vehicles that are, that's the start of the 72, so they actually, a lot of times before it's noticed or a complaint comes in, we get a, we, the Sheriff's Department will tag them with that notice, and then that triggers the person to move the vehicle, and it's a cat and mouse game, if you will, moving the vehicle around. So, that's the current rules. So, the ordinance, again, has that permit requirement, 14 days every six months, or an exception for incidental moving. So, what I'm hearing is the proposed change might be to, for the incidental loading and unloading and preparations for a trip, that that timeframe be increased. That's the only change I'm really hearing from members of the council. And if that's a desire of the majority, a council wants to change, that would not be difficult to change at Section C1.
Would that, would that, how would that, how would that kind of change, this is what I wanted to get to, how would that kind of change impact the enforceability of the ordinance? Because remember, the basic issue here is we have an ordinance, but it's not really enforceable in practice.
Yeah, it is a lot easier to enforce if it's one night, because you get a complaint from a resident, hey, they, this is the second night the vehicle was there, and so, if it's marked by a sheriff's deputy on one night, and then two nights later, it's there, we know, or the next night. know, or the next night, because we've heard that it's already been there one night, then that's when the citation or possibly towing, I mean, the ordinance doesn't jump right to a tow and impound, it has a fifty-dollar fine for a parking ticket. So that would be the first enforcement mechanism.
Okay, thank you. That helps as a background piece for what I'm going to say. As is so often the case in establishing ordinances and laws of any kind, there are no perfect solutions here. We are once again pursuing the mythical balance. Unfortunately, as often happens, I often tell people that laws primarily are enforced not by the police, but by the fact that people simply wish to follow the law. They're reasonable, we are, most of us reasonable most of the time, and we simply follow the rules. Unfortunately, there are some people who do not, and what ends up happening in those cases, if it gets egregious enough, as it has in this situation, we end up having to tighten things, and then that puts people who pretty much are law-abiding, reasonable, follow-the-rules kind of people in a difficult position. Which leads me to believe that I'm going to support, I don't know how the vote will turn out here, we only have four people tonight, I'm going to support the ordinance as it's written. I do think that, as has been said by several people, Bob most eloquently, the important part of this would be for folks who are in special situations to keep the chief informed. The chief is not in the business of going around and unnecessarily causing difficulty for folks, he has plenty of other things to do, as does his staff. And I think it will work out well that way, or work out okay that way. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I have a question. Chief Roethlis, would you mind coming up for a second? I just want to get a real-world perspective from you. How often do you deal with this, and what's your take on the ordinance as it exists, and what we're proposing to do? How does that impact you and your officers?
Well, we deal with quite a bit with our boat lately. For some reason, it's something that's really kicked in in the last, like, year, year and a half, and prior to that, not a lot of complaints, but we've been getting them. And we have been getting this hide-the-boat thing, and so it's really been upsetting the neighbors. The city attorney is right, with respect to enforcement, it makes it much easier to have this one day versus two or three-day incidental. But I'll say this, you know, Councilmember Grisilli is also correct, in that we currently have a law on the books in the Vehicle Code that says you cannot park your car on the street for any more than seventy-two hours. That's, that is illegal. You can't store your, it's called storing your car on the street, and you can't do it. But if somebody calls us and says, look, you know what, I have a situation, I'm going to Europe, I'm going to leave my car there, my driveway's full, can I leave my car there for a week or whatever? We just put a dude outside on it and we leave it alone. So it's not, I think you're right, we're not out there to, what we're trying to do is to make sure, though, that, that basically the discretion doesn't fall on the boat owner, especially one who's going to take advantage of any opportunity, window they can, to store their boat on the street and interfere with their neighbors, rather than pay for storage like every, like Mr. Baumgartner does. And that it lies with discretion lies with the Sheriff's Office, and that we work in this ordinance, as we do in all ordinances, with the public and who are working in good faith. The ordinance allows us for somebody who's taking advantage of the situation, who is outside the rules of good faith, to then have the hammer to go ahead and make sure that they don't do that anymore. So that's why I like the way it's crafted.
Okay, so currently it's seventy-two hours, the proposal is for twenty-four.
Correct. For basically no overnight parking of the boat unless you're going somewhere the next morning. Of course, you can do it, you can still do that, you can do that twice a month, plus you have the two fourteen-day windows that you can basically store it out in front of your house for a couple of weeks if you needed to do that, to fix it or to repair it or to do whatever you wanted to do to it. You'd have that opportunity. And it is certainly not as restrictive as, again, there's sixty-seven, two-thirds of the cities have an ordinance like this, and it's certainly not as restrictive as some.
Okay, and Cameron's idea of sort of splitting the difference and doing it at forty-eight hours, what's your take on?
We will do whatever council would like us to do, I can tell you it's easier to enforce. We know when we see a boat on the street that night, the only reason it should be there is the next day somebody's going on a trip. So we don't have to worry whether that's day one, or day two, or day three, or what day is that? So for enforceability purposes, it's easier that way. But we can do whatever council would like on that.
And through the chair, recall that this ordinance mirrors the RV ordinance, which has that same twenty-four-hour provision, and if the council, so those same arguments would apply to that ordinance as well.
I think the RV ordinance passed in 2009, and I can assure you, I really don't think we've ever towed an RV, so.
Pretty hard.
I mean, if we had to, we would have, but there's a lot of things we can do before we tow something.
My neighbor's got an RV that I can't tell you how many times he's parked out there, but usually he brings it over to wash it and load it and take off on a trip, and he's back for a day or two, and while he reverses the project, the process, like Jack was saying. All right. Okay, thanks, Greg. We have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-eight in order to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter eight point four-one to the Municipal Code to restrict boat and trailer parking.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Cameron, I see your lights on.
Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment. So I totally respect my colleagues here and the chief. I am going to vote no. I do think, oh, there we go, amplified. I do think extending it to forty-eight hours, maybe making it once a week rather than every other week, is more reflective of kind of real-world experience, and I think there's some compelling cases that have been brought up. I also don't like the idea of passing laws that we then say we won't enforce, so I'm going to vote no, even though I'm broadly supportive of the idea.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to, with all due respect, note that every single law on the books has a function of enforceability in it, and there, I don't know of a single law that's ever been passed that's enforced absolutely strictly the way it's drafted.
Okay, nobody else wants to speak? I think we're going to take a vote.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Nope.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, we are now at, are we also going to do eight R now?
Might as well.
May as well? Any disagreement? Okay, adopt a resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the General Fund zero-zero-zero-one to Parks, to the Parks Maintenance Professional Services Account zero-one-seven-one-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-two-zero-three-two-zero, and authorizing expenditure of funds.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Since I was the one who had asked to pull this. I actually am supportive of it, I just had a question that I wanted answered by staff, which was, why did the fund that we are topping up run out of money before the end of the year? That wasn't clear in the staff report as to, you know, why the fund's balance had dropped so low.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, J. Walter Public Works Director. Councilman Obert, the reason that the fund is running dry before the end of the year largely has to do with the work that we did earlier this year for the drought preparation. So we did a lot of work to replace sprinklers with drip irrigation and controllers and other kinds of things like that, so we spent with the budget that we had and kind of thought we were going to make it, and this one with the lights came up at the last minute, and we just don't have the extra budget for it in the current year.
Through the chair again. Thank you, I appreciate that. Certainly support the idea of being water-wise. I would like to ask in the future if we have those kind of explanations, if we can work them in the staff report, that would be great.
Thanks for that feedback.
All right. Okay, do we need a motion to approve this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to endorse adopting a resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the General Fund zero-zero-zero-one to the Parks Maintenance Professional Services Account zero-one-seven-one-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-two-zero-three-two-zero, and authorizing expenditure of funds.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Bristol?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Oh, hold on. Hold on. Any public comment on this? Anyone wish to speak? Okay. Go ahead.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Now that we've taken care of that, I think now we can move on to ten A, which we moved into this position. This is new business consideration of adopting a resolution directing the San Mateo County Chief Elections Officer to conduct the November third, twenty-fifteen election for the city of San Carlos wholly by mail pursuant to the pilot program authorized by Assembly Bill twenty-twenty-eight, if all other affected jurisdictions also request participation in the pilot program at that election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief presentation on AB twenty-twenty-eight. My name is Mark Church, and I am the Chief Elections Officer and Assessor of County Clerk Recorder, and joining me is Melinda Dubroff, a member of my staff from the Registration and Elections Division. As mayor indicated, AB twenty-twenty-eight is the all-male ballot pilot program for San Mateo County, and we're delighted to be here this evening to talk about this important project. Initially, the legislature enacted an all-male ballot pilot program for Yolo County, and AB twenty-twenty-eight is an expansion of that pilot program to include San Mateo County, which became effective on January one, twenty-fifteen. And the purpose of including San Mateo County in the pilot is to allow for the collection of additional data from an urban county to complement the data from a rural county, which is Yolo County. And the idea is that this will provide the legislature with a more complete picture of the effects of all-male ballot elections. San Mateo County was selected by the state legislature for this project because we are an urban and diverse county, we have experience with all-male ballot elections, and there is a growing trend towards voting by mail in our county. AB twenty-twenty-eight authorizes San Mateo County to conduct up to three elections entirely by mail until January one, twenty-eighteen. It only applies to local special elections and consolidated municipal, school, and special district elections. It does not apply to presidential elections. So we are targeting all-male elections for November twenty-fifteen and November twenty-seventeen, local consolidated elections, and one other local special election, which has not yet been determined. The AB twenty-twenty-eight requirements, every voter will get a ballot in the mail, even if the voter has not signed up to vote by mail. In this program, all return envelopes for the ballots will be postage prepaid, unlike our current program. And although we call this an all-male ballot election, there will be a limited number of polling places throughout the county. The law calls for at least one polling place in each city of the county, so voters can still vote in person at the polls if they want. And like Yolo County, San Mateo County will report back to the state legislature and the Secretary of State on such factors as voter turnout, election costs, and demographic information, and provide a comparison with prior elections run in the traditional format. The potential benefits are significant. We have found that elections conducted strictly by mail can lead to an increase in voter participation and cost savings. In May of twenty-eleven, as authorized by our county charter, we conducted a countywide all-male special election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, including three local school district measures. The turnout in that election was twenty-six percent. In contrast, a special countywide standalone traditional election that was held in nineteen-ninety-seven to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, turnout in that election was fifteen-point-six percent. So the turnout for the countywide all-male ballot election was ten percent higher than the traditional election. The cost is also substantially less, about one-half, one-third to one-half the cost of a traditional election. And for our county, in a traditional countywide election, we hire and train some seventeen-hundred precinct workers, deploy and test over fourteen-hundred voting machines, and secure about two-hundred-nine polling places. All these costs will be eliminated under this program. And for the city of San Carlos, the cost of the twenty-thirteen local consolidated election was about thirty-three thousand dollars. Based on that amount, the city should save somewhere between eleven thousand to seventeen thousand with an all-male ballot election this November. All-male ballot elections also reduce the risk of human error that come with employing a large number of poll workers. Problems will be more efficiently handled with a significantly smaller, more experienced, and better-trained and managed election staff. Another advantage of all-male ballot elections is faster results on election night. With no precinct ballots, a much greater portion of the ballots will be tallied soon after the closing of the polls at eight P.M. And this chart shows a breakdown of the registered voters by age group in the county. The dark green represents a number of voters who have signed up to vote by mail permanently, and the light green represents one vote, one-time vote-by-mail voters and polling-place voters. And this chart shows breakdown of permanent vote-by-mail voters by party preference in the city of San Carlos. And as you can see, there is not much difference between the two major parties. And if we have the next chart, this chart shows a breakdown of permanent vote-by-mail voters by city. Over the years, election turnout trends have shifted in the all-male ballot direction. About fifty-seven percent of our voters countywide, and sixty-four percent of the voters in the city of San Carlos already prefer to vote by mail, and have signed up to do so on a permanent basis. And as you can see, San Carlos ranks as one of the highest cities in the county when it comes to voting by mail on a permanent basis. More and more people are becoming familiar with voting by mail, and it continues to grow in popularity, simply because it is convenient. And by the way, the resolution indicates the countywide average is fifty-seven, sorry, it's fifty-nine percent, and it is actually fifty-seven percent. So if this resolution is passed tonight, you may want to amend that one statistic. This next chart shows breakdown of city by city of how voters cast ballots in the November twenty-thirteen local consolidated election, and the breakdown shows the percentage of voters who cast their ballots by mail, including both permanent and one-time vote-by-mail voters, and those who cast their ballots at the polls. And as you can see in the next chart, in the city of San Carlos, seventy-eight percent of the registered voters cast their ballots by mail, and only twenty-two percent at the polls in the November twenty-thirteen election. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Melinda, who will cover the rest of the PowerPoint.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As stated, there will be options for voters to return their ballot. They don't have to just put it in the mail, they can drop it off at their city hall, any city hall, not just where they live. And the ballot boxes will be available here as they always are, twenty-eight days prior to the election. This law requires that the city hall drop-off stay open until eight o'clock. In regular elections, we're just here, the ballot box is just available during business hours, but this will be something new for this election. We'll have voting centers open twenty-nine days prior to Election Day at the Elections Office at Tower Road and at the Assessor's Office at five-five-five County Center in Redwood City. It's open regular business hours, and will be open the Saturday prior to Election Day. Election Day voting. You do not have to vote by mail if you don't want to. There'll be a polling place in each town or city. If you didn't receive a ballot in the mail, you just found out about the election, you prefer the process of going to the polls and seeing your neighbors, you can vote there, pick up a new ballot, drop off your ballot. In this case, though, for this election, you'll be able to go to any polling place in the counties. in the county. So you live in San Carlos, you, you know, work in South San Francisco, if you need to, you could go to the South San Francisco polling place and vote there. So very convenient option for people. The next steps for us as an Elections Office is to reach out to voters, educate them about voting by mail. We will be making multiple contacts with voters. There was an academic study that you need to make at least four contacts with voters for them to understand about vote-by-mail voting and getting their ballot back. So we have plans for that, plans for a media campaign, digital, social, print. So we're doing a lot of outreach for a mail ballot election in November. And we will review our work. A consultant will be chosen to report on the election for us. So there is a specific language required by AB 2028 that needs to be in the resolution to call the election. As you know, there's a deadline to call a candidate election, which is 114 days prior to Election Day, and then 88 days prior is the last date to request an all-male ballot election. I think you have a resolution on the agenda today, and so that's the next step for jurisdictions to get involved. So Election Day itself is different. The polling locations, like I said, spread throughout the county, at least one in each city, drop-off locations, voting centers. There's still options for people who don't want to vote by mail. One thing not related to AB 2028 but important is a new rule for the deadline for returning your vote-by-mail ballots. So instead of the Elections Office needing to have the ballot in our hands by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, if the ballot is postmarked and mailed by Election Day, we can count it if we receive it by Friday after the election. So this is very timely for us if we're going to have an all-male ballot election, to have that extra breathing room for voters. Thank you.
One last comment, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For this pilot program to go forward, every jurisdiction that is scheduled to have an election in November will need to authorize participation in this all-male ballot pilot program. And so if one jurisdiction decides not to do it, the program will not move forward. We're hoping and encouraging every jurisdiction to participate. It's an opportunity to help shape the future course of elections in San Mateo County, in the state of California. Legislature will base its decision in part on what happens here in San Mateo County. Thank you. We're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. I think you gave a good title for our website, Shape the Future.
That is the title of our website, as a matter of fact, yeah.
All right, thank you. I don't see any lights on, and so, and I don't see any speakers for this item. Anybody wanted to speak on this item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Cameron.
I can make a comment after.
All right, that's fine, go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2015-.
51.
I'm sorry.
51.
51, a resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos, adopting the negative declaration for the city, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Resolution City of San Carlos directing the San Mateo County Chief Elections Officer to conduct the November 3, 2015 election for the city of San Carlos, wholly by mail pursuant to the pilot program authorized by Assembly Bill 2028, if all other affected jurisdictions also request participation in the pilot program at that election.
Second. Cameron, now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a brief comment. Thank you for the presentation. I went to college up in Oregon, and I worked in Oregon politics for about eight years for a member of Congress and for the governor. And many people don't know this, but Oregon, the state of Oregon, has had an all-vote-by-mail since the year 2000. There was an initiative in 1988 which got rid of polling places and replaced it with all-male ballot. And it's been, it's been great for the state of Oregon. Voter turnout has increased. There has been no reported fraud that I'm aware of, and the process still enjoys very high popularity in the state of Oregon. And so it just, it makes a lot of sense to me. It's not always convenient to go on a Tuesday to the polling place. And as you presented, most people are voting by mail anyway, and there's a huge potential cost savings for the state of California over the long term. So I appreciate you pushing forward with this, and I'm glad we're taking this up tonight.
Seeing no other comments, and we have a motion. Crystal.
I just wanted to confirm this, the second, who seconded?
Mark did.
Mark, okay.
Mark.
Thank you. Councilmember Gassily?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And Melinda?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking us out of order. We know you have a full agenda. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Let's hope the other jurisdictions agree. Okay. Let's see, we are now on to.
9A.
9A. Now we are at 9A. Okay. Going backward. This is a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution adopting the negative declaration for the city of San Carlos 2015-2023 Housing Element, adopting the San Carlos 2015-2023 Housing Element with modifications, and directing staff to submit to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for certification and review, and accepting the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2014. Al.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, state law requires that every city in the state of California adopt a housing element as part of its general plan. And the reason that the state requires that and the purpose of these elements is to ensure that local governments adequately plan to meet the housing needs of all people within the communities, in the cities, in the state, regardless of their income. Tonight is a big milestone for the city of San Carlos, as it would be for any city in the state of California. Housing elements are inherently difficult to prepare. They take a lot of thought, a lot of data goes into it, and it takes a lot of time and some cost as well. So this is a real milestone event to get it to you in the shape that it's in this evening. I'd like to take a moment to thank the City Council for your focus on the housing element. I know that you've taken a look at this a couple of times in the last few months as it's been going through the draft process, and your guidance has been very helpful in terms of putting together the policies that went into it, and it made our jobs a lot easier. The city is currently updating the housing element for the 215 through 223 timeframe. And the reason that it's an eight-year timeframe is because we made our deadline, and the state said that any city that completes the housing element, and hopefully the council will agree this evening, any city that does that by May 30th gets an eight-year housing element as opposed to a five-year housing element. So we're on track to do that, and it'll, I think it'll save us a lot of time and provide certainty in the marketplace as well. I'd also like to thank Lisa Porras, our Principal Planner, for her work, her hard work on this, and Jeff Baird and Joshua Abrams from Baird and Driscoll, who were our consultants. And we have Mr. Abrams here to help answer any questions. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Lisa Porras for a very brief presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Lisa Porras, Principal Planner. Let's see. I just wanted to point out before we get started on the housing element, I should have never touched this, on the housing element, that also in your City Council packet this evening, under Attachment 2, is another required element of the state concerning housing elements. And what that is, is the Annual Housing Element Progress Report. This is simply required every year by the state where we get an opportunity to inform our elected officials and the public about the number of new building permits that have been issued to construct new housing in the city, whether there's been any financial assistance given to preserve existing affordable housing units within the city, as well as status of program implementation. So I just wanted to point that out so that it doesn't get lost. If you have any questions on that, we'd be happy to take them. As you may recall, the city began the process of the housing element update through a partnership with other jurisdictions in San Mateo County and the county itself, which is known as 21 Elements. The city sponsored its own workshops in March and September earlier this year. We use the Shape San Carlos, which is a new online platform to get input from the community, as well as provided an opportunity for folks to get educated about the housing element at Harvest Nights. But specifically, recent actions and activity for the housing element itself include review earlier this year by both the Planning Commission and City Council. And that was an opportunity where we heard back from the commission and council as far as specific contributions, policy contributions made to the housing element. Thereafter, staff and the consultant team worked to incorporate those into the draft housing element, which then was forwarded to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We had an opportunity to discuss the policies with the state representative, and there were actually about six minor modifications that the state requested that we make. So we drafted some language on that. We shared it with the state. And the state basically gave us a letter saying that if you adopt the draft and include these modifications, you're meeting all of the state requirements, and it would be a document that they could certify for us. So we took all of that forward to the Planning Commission very recently, and Planning Commission is actually recommending that the council approve the draft housing element. I don't know, we can go through these. I just wanted to share with you some of the contributions. Al touched upon those, but specifically, the Planning Commission wanted us to reevaluate the Quantified Objection section of the housing element to make sure that our goals were in line with our housing needs. That was an amendment that we made. They also wanted to clarify that we look at fee reductions and make sure that those are only applicable to projects that actually have affordable housing in them. And then they asked us to add a new action item, which is to maintain a list of sites for workforce housing, housing that would be eligible for federal tax credits. That's included in our housing element. And then, as you recall, because you asked that we do them, we made five additional modifications to the housing element based upon City Council direction. We looked at our policy language to make sure that we had language in there that would encourage more affordable units through incentives such as height increases and density bonuses, and added an action item addressing earthquake safety rehabilitation to make sure that our homeowners are aware of rehabilitation loan programs specifically as relate to seismic safety upgrades, to ensure that there's adequate senior housing and multifamily housing designations and policies related to the specific population segments, and to also look at ways where we could accommodate and facilitate separate cooking facilities within the same single unit as part of the home-sharing program policy that we recommended. And then finally, to touch upon, make sure that the housing element sufficiently described all of the city's accomplishments. So what did the state ask us to do? They wanted us to modify an action to address the developmentally-disabled population and the extremely low-income housing segment. So we modified Action HOU 3.2 to address those population segments specifically. They asked us to add a new policy and program to identify, to seek ways in identifying funding for lower-income housing. You'll find that in the draft housing element on pages 24 and 27, under Policy 5.7, and then Action 5.11 specifically. They asked us to modify Action HOU 8.2 to identify locations where we would distribute public handouts. It wasn't enough to just say that we're going to do outreach and we're going to have handouts. The state really wanted us to commit to identifying locations and opportunities for doing that. And then finally, and this is an important piece, is that part of our housing element is making sure that we have enough land to accommodate housing growth over the next eight years. And in particular, for the lower-income segment, housing RENA numbers, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation numbers, we needed to describe more information about the existing conditions and development potential on certain sites where they had enough capacity where we could count those for low-income units. So that language will be added into the discussion on page 107. So basically, as I mentioned before, the draft housing element dated January 13, together with the modifications, if the council approves them tonight, would receive certification by the state, according to the letter that they sent to the city back in March, which states that the draft element with revisions meets the statutory requirements of the state housing element law. The element will comply with state housing element law when the draft or revisions are adopted, and then submitted to the department in accordance with state law. And as Al mentioned, this is a very significant milestone because we are right upon the state deadline, which is May 31st, where we need to provide an adopted housing element to the state in order to receive certification. A certified housing element is a common funding, is a common criteria in order to be eligible for grants. And it would also allow us to maintain schedule with the 21 Elements partnership that we've been involved with, especially as we move forward and work with 21 Elements on a number of implementation items. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study was prepared to determine if the project would have a significant effect on the environment. The initial study concluded there wouldn't, that there would not be an effect on the environment, so a negative declaration was prepared and circulated for the required 30-day review period beginning February 26 through March 27. It was also advertised in the paper, recorded with the county of San Mateo, and sent to the State Clearing House, and there were no public comments received. And the recommendation by the Planning Commission is to adopt the negative declaration for the housing element, adopt the city of San Carlos draft housing element, together with the modifications, and to direct staff to submit the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. And this concludes my presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I don't see anybody wanting to ask any questions, so if that's the case, this is a public hearing. And I do have one speaker slip, Bonnie McClure. Hello, Bonnie.
I realize that this is a document that goes to the state, and then the state doesn't really have any power to enforce that we do all of these things. But I do want to urge you to pay attention to the letter that was written to you from the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter. I know you each got a copy, and these are ways of acting upon the housing element when it comes back approved, ways to improve it without having to go through right now and delay the action because you need, you have a May 31 deadline. I assume that you all have read it. I won't repeat everything. There's a lot of detail in there, but I hope that you will in the future pay attention to all of these points, and perhaps we could actually cut down on the greenhouse emissions. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All right. Motion second. Roll call.
Councilmember Gassily?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2015-.
52.
52, a resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos, adopting the negative declaration for the city of San Carlos 2015 through 2023 Housing Element, adopting the San Carlos draft 2015 to 2023 Housing Element with modifications. 2015 to 2023 housing element with modifications and directing staff to submit to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Comments? Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In listening to the presentation and thinking about the number of times that I've heard this subject come before us, it occurs to me that one of the elements that would probably make it more feasible for more progress to be made on these fronts is work to build a constituency to support more diverse housing options. And what I mean by that is anybody who participated in the Black Mountain Properties Open House that we had heard from a number of people, I know I did, that there's a desire on the part of many people in San Carlos not to see any more residential development of any kind, whether it's single-family homes or higher-density housing or what have you. And that's understandable. I mean, people are viewing their piece of the pie as being circumscribed, and they want to protect it. But there are potential constituencies that would support more diverse housing options, and those could be anywhere from, you know, anybody who might want to see road traffic reduced a little bit because we have a jobs-housing imbalance in San Mateo County, through people who would like to have the opportunity for their children to perhaps live in the town with them after they matriculate out of school and graduate, and, you know, they may not all be working for Google and making millions of dollars in stock options to be able to afford homes right out of the box. So I don't have any specific suggestions, but I do hope that staff will think about that in terms of what steps we might be able to take simply to build constituency to support creating more diverse housing options in the town.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. All right. Any other comments? All right. I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. That was 9A. Now, we're going to go back to 10B. Consideration of introducing an ordinance repealing ordinance 1479 concerning municipal code section 8.10 that established water conservation measures in time of emergency or drought.
Good evening, council. Once again, before you this evening is the consideration of repealing the ordinance 1479 that council approved back in November of 2014, whereby we established various water restrictions based on Cal Waters Rule 14.1, in addition establishing the ability of council to declare a drought emergency whenever necessary. In November, the council declared that emergency, which is to be in effect this week on May 15. However, in light of the winter of 2014-2015, the state has taken even more drastic measures and has asked local water agencies to enforce greater restrictions and penalties to ensure that all over the state of California, we have a significant reduction in water use. So with that, I'd like to introduce Cal Waters' Tony Karasco, who will provide some detail to you on what Cal Water is doing. And with that, then we can answer questions and talk more about what the state's, what the city's plans are. Thank you. So, Tony, here's this.
Welcome, Tony.
Honorable mayor, council members, staff, good evening. My name's Tony Karasco, district manager for California Water Service Company. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide you more of an update of what Cal Water is doing, but in addition to that, I presented some slides, and we can go through them as quick as you'd like to because there's a lot of information, and it's all come in the last couple of weeks from the state. I'll start with, as you're aware, we're in a historic drought, and just looking at these Lake Oroville, as you can see, the capacity just a few years ago to now, and mostly what's concerning is the Sierra snowpack. It's decreased substantially in this year, but their average over the last four years is 31%. Just, again, very historic drought. Cal Waters' response, I'm not going to go through every one of these. I know in previous presentations, we discussed these, but Cal Water's been extremely busy, as well as the state. In January 2014, Cal Water created a drought team, as a lot of other water agencies in the state, and the governor declared a drought emergency. And then, as we moved through that, we created Rule 14.1, and I applaud the council with the ordinance, which followed thereafter with, you know, with the drought as well. Continuing with 2014, you know, again, a lot of things had happened. We really ramped up our conservation program, and I'll get into how well we've been doing in San Carlos. But we have, we got more funding in addition to going out in the community, workshops, et cetera. And so, we've been able to see some really good results from that in this community These are some of our programs that we have to date, and again, applaud the residents of San Carlos for taking advantage of these programs. A lot of them are rebates, and also us going out and going to their homes and working with them and helping them on how they conserve. We also have the commercial conservation programs. What we've been seeing is not a lot of commercial has been coming to us, so these haven't been as effective, but we got some new programs that are coming so that the commercial properties can really take advantage of some of the programs that we do have. I encourage parks and recs to take advantage of some of our rebate programs that are going to come as well. Some of these include the large landscape program, where we'll go out and we'll audit some of the parks and golf courses, cemeteries, et cetera, and look at their current usage, do surveys, and really look at how we can help them conserve much more. And I think with the Schedule 14 that I'm going to be talking about shortly, there's ways that we're going to be able to really look at some of the outdoor usage on a weekly and a monthly basis. This is the slide here. As you can see, the blue column is 2013, and the yellow is 2014 to 15. We are seeing a steady drop in the usage from our customers. And in some of the months where you see that they're pretty much average, it's because one year we had a lot of rain and the next year we didn't. And this is going into February, and we're really seeing some good results in the last few months. So some of the recent developments, as you're aware, the governor issued an executive order. During that month, the Water Resource Control Board issued a draft regulatory framework in response to the executive order. The Public Utilities Commission adopted a resolution requiring that regulated utilities like Cal Water comply with these. And the board, in April 18, released a draft regulations for public comment. During this time period, there is so much public comment throughout the state of California that we had even looked at our Rule 14.1, which we crafted our Schedule 14.1, and we really took the comments to heart in how we can not only reach our goals, but also work with the communities. Just last week, the board adopted the final regulations, and on last Friday or Thursday, the commission adopted the resolution requiring compliance with the board regulations. We're expecting our Schedule 14.1, our scheduled Rule 14.1, to be approved in the next couple of weeks, and we'll start enforcing it on June 1. The summary of the executive order, there's a lot of information and a lot of stuff that they're doing, and this is kind of a highlight, is, you know, reaffirms prohibitions put in place by previous proclamations from 2014. It mandates the 25% reduction, and then there's other pieces with the requires the board, Department of Water Resources, California Energy Commission to take actions to prohibit certain water usage, promote water savings, and require regulatory reporting, or, excuse me, regular reporting. And also, they're really looking at a lot of the projects that have been somewhat on hold for whatever reason, and they're asking that the regulatory agencies try to streamline these projects, and so we can look at alternative sources of supply, water transfers, et cetera. And some of these projects are even looking at the desalinization plants and groundwater So where are we at today? Well, again, they used a basis from the summer months of 2013 and what we've been, what we did in those same summer months of 2014, and what we're going to be doing in the next few months going through this summer. And as you can see by this slide, San Carlos has done an outstanding job, one of the better communities on the whole peninsula as far as conserving water. I think the residents really started working towards their personal goals to cut back that we've seen, and that goes from not only indoor use, taking advantage of our programs, but also looking at their outdoor usage. And some of the meetings that we've had with city staff and what the residents are doing to look at conserving, it's wanting to remove their swimming pools and things of this nature in order to, again, really looking into the future. So San Carlos currently, rather than some communities are needing a 20%, you've seen the communities that need up to 30%, 35%, and some that are lower than that. And San Carlos is, we're needing to reduce by five more percent. That is achievable, and it's a goal that I think that we're not going to have any problem reaching once we start enforcing and educating our customers a little bit more with our Schedule 14.1. Again, I commend the community, the city staff, and your leadership in reaching this goal here. You look in the communities, and you don't want to be the ones that are at 25% and 36% right now. We're in a really good place. Other elements of the board's draft regulations, again, we're going to be reporting to the state. There is enforcement tools that we can use, including fines up to $10,000 per day for noncompliance. That's not only for customers, but it's also for a water purveyor. One of the things that we're wanting to do is, we've got an enforcement mechanism, but what we want to do is, again, we want to be the water heroes, let's say, and really educate our customers, not only for today, but also for the future. But we do have these things in place. Also prohibiting water uses more, and that's some outdoor usage, and there's quite a bit of information for the outdoor usage. So again, the commission's framework is somewhat the same as what the state's requiring. With regards to California Water Service Company, we put in place Schedule 14.1. It establishes water budgets and penalties. We notified our customers via email, and we gave them a brief view of what 14.1 looks like. We're going to be holding public meetings, and where we're going to go, our workshops, I should say, where we're going to go more in-depth, and those are going to be up to two hours long. And again, comply with the board's reporting requirements and assist enforcement with the reporting of water wasting, et cetera. Additional commission requirements, again, limit customers' outdoor irrigation, identify high-volume users who do not reduce water usage at least by 20%. Again, we're going to be looking at individual customers and how they're doing as well, and if they are not, if they're going into the third tier of the usage and they exceed their allotment, then their bill's going to double on the per-unit charge. Another idea, they're encouraging utilities to have a program where there's remote meters so that the customer can look at it on a daily basis. We can look at it on a daily basis. If a person gets to that point where a customer, where we're telling them they have to put it in because they're not, they're really not conserving, and they're wasting water, then they'll have to pay for that. I think we've presented in the past with Rule 14.1 all of the prohibited uses of water, and that's the, you know, just overwatering, using hoses to wash cars without a nozzle, and hosing down and watering sidewalks. Also, the water fountains, they have to use, the water has to be recycled. And then, one of the other things that wasn't in Rule 14.1, but it's in Schedule 14.1, is not to water directly after, 48 hours after measurable rainfall. We're also working with the community with, when you're going to a restaurant, serving water, you have to ask for the water. We're going to be providing the table tents for that as well. We're going to be also working with the hotels and motels to put up the signs where the guests will have to ask for extra for the laundry to be done. We're going to try to promote that they utilize the towels, et cetera, for more than one use. Then there's quite a bit of stuff on the irrigating of outdoor mediums and irrigation with potable water for newly constructed homes. And we're working with city staff on, there's a lot of questions in this area, so we're going to continue working with city staff so that they can help our customers as well in different devices to use and what's acceptable and what's not. So our Cal Waters plan, we've created a whole team, a drought team of over 20 staff members for the state, and so we have quite a few employees are going to assist with our education, enforcement, and compliance. We're working with our customers, notifying them. We're having workshops. We developed Schedule 14.1, including proposed water budgets, penalties, other programs to achieve the reduction targets. And I'm going to continue with this, but again, it's kind of the same thing of our public hearings, and we're really wanting to work with the higher water users and try to find something that'll work for them, because they're the ones that are really going to be hurt with the outdoor usage and us going to watering three days a week and different times, et cetera. I want to go back to this slide because something came up earlier, promote the programs and going out in the community. I want to thank Tara as well for getting us involved in Hometown Days. We're going to have a booth there and try to really work with a lot of our customers and just people in the community, even if they're not our customers. We can talk about conservation, so we'll be there as well. And some of our proposed conservation programs, again, there's quite a bit of stuff, but a lot of these programs versus us, for instance, the toilet rebate, we would offer somebody a toilet rebate, and then they would have to go buy it and install it. We're going to advance that to where we can hire a contractor. We pay for the toilet, and we pay for the installation of the toilet. I think that'll be, I think we'll get more people to want to take advantage of that program as well. Again, the turf replacement rebates, they're really not that, I mean, you're talking pennies per square foot, and I think customers would take more advantage if we were to contribute a little bit more on that. A lot of outdoor rebates, and again, working with commercial properties as well. And do you have any questions at this time? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Very thorough presentation.
I'm sorry. Through the chair. I recall that I recused myself when we voted for this, so I'm going to recuse myself on this side also.
Okay. Thank you. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tony. Oh, turn my microphone on. Couple of questions, actually, for Couple of questions, actually, for staff initially, and then I do have one or two for Tony. Greg, as I read this, as I recall, when we passed the ordinance, before we actually were able to put some rules into effect, or would have gone into effect, it was a two-step process. We had the ordinance, and then we had to come back and act again. What I'm concerned about, or my question is, if we repeal the ordinance, does that take us all the way back to the beginning? So we'd have to reintroduce an ordinance and then start again? Is there any reason why we can't just undo the last step, which actually imposed our own regulations?
That would be one option that you have. What happened is, we drafted the ordinance with the recommended measures included, and then the triggering mechanism, of course, was the actual resolution declaring the emergency because the governor had declared a drought emergency. So that is an option, not tonight, because that hasn't been agendized, but it is an option to repeal that resolution, which would take away all the enforcement mechanisms that are in the ordinance.
Do you happen to know if there was some thinking about why repealing the ordinance was brought forward instead of just repealing the resolution?
Well, my understanding is that it was felt that with the measures adopted and approved by the CPUC and imposed by the governor, that there might be some confusion among the public, considering what rules would apply to them. And honestly, after hearing the presentation from Cal Water at the staff level, Cal Water definitely has, because it's a service provider, has more ability to enforce some of these provisions with actual service measures and changes in rate structure for people who use excess water, where we didn't have those remedies in our ordinance, nor were they available to us to do that. So I think that was the thinking.
All right. Well, I'll come back to that when we actually have discussion and voting. Tony, the question I have, and I know you and I had a conversation a few weeks ago about this issue. When I look at the proposed rules, one thing in there that concerns me is the cutbacks are being done on a percentage reduction from prior-year use, or some historical period of time use. And effectively, what that does, it creates a perverse incentive for anybody who, or an anti-incentive for anybody or any organization that has invested in water-conserving systems and technologies and whatnot over the past few years, because even though they've done that, and their usage might be significantly less than comparable organization or residents that didn't invest in those things, everybody's going to have the same X percent reduction. So I'd like to get a little insight as to why Cal Water chose to go in that direction, particularly given that I know of some communities, particularly Santa Cruz, which didn't. They actually said, no, we're going to establish a specific allotment, basically, I guess they did it per family size, and say, that's the amount of water that you have, and if you go above that, then you start triggering the higher costs and penalties and whatnot. So can you enlighten me on that, about why you guys didn't go that way?
Absolutely. Thank you. The rule, Schedule 14.1, is there's quite a bit of information in there. So I'll take your first scenario with somebody who's already done an outstanding job, even prior to 2013, and they were at the, you know, a minimal level per capita, let's say, or square footage. We would recognize that customer, and we would work with the customer. And so if they came to us and said, what is our allotment? We're already at a certain amount of per capita, let's say, and we really don't think that we can meet your targets, we're going to work with them individually. So that is an individual customer and our business, and we can give them, we can document that and make sure that they don't get charged additional in the next tier, let's say. So they're not getting penalized per, you know, per their, if they exceed a certain allotment. So that's more of a business that does quite a bit, and even a customer. And we do acknowledge that in 2000, the summer of 2013, maybe all the kids were off someplace else, college, et cetera, whatever, and then that same family had people move into the household. So there, obviously, there's going to be more usage. We're going to work with those customers as well. And so we're not trying to, we don't want to impose the penalties. I think that the penalties are there for the people that are egregious, and we're setting allotments for the individual households, and there's a whole mechanism for that. And again, if a customer comes to us and they say, well, things are different today. I've got four more people living with us, we'll make those adjustments. And there's also in our, I'll call it the enforcement mechanism, where somebody liked the ordinance, where somebody can come in, I don't want to say challenge it, but they can work with us or question it, I guess you can say. We will look at that at a case-by-case basis. And again, what we want to do is, we want to get our customers to think about conservation, conserve where they can, and just be responsible, if you will. And so we do have things in place to address that.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you're dealing with them on an exception basis, but with all due respect, that doesn't actually answer my question, which was, given that one could do it either way, why was a way which requires dealing with, requires treating people and organizations who were trying to be efficient as the exceptions? Why was that approach adopted? I still don't really understand the reason for that. Again, given that other communities have in fact said, no, we will do it a different way, which intuitively makes more sense, at least to me.
I understand. It was, in creating Rule 14, or Schedule 14.1, there were so many different scenarios, so many different communities, and we had to put something in place that would try to address as many things as possible, but give an opportunity to, specific areas of concern from a customer, we can work with that customer. I don't know if that answers your question as well, and I don't know if I have the right answer for you, I suppose.
Yeah, well, actually, I appreciate you saying that it doesn't, but let's not spend any more time on it. Just count me as skeptical of the approach, and I would, again, strongly encourage the Cal Water Board to consider revising their approach and taking a different direction, because otherwise, quite honestly, hopefully, we get past this current drought, you actually literally are creating an incentive for people to waste water during a reasonable, you know, when the water conditions are reasonably tolerable, so that they will not end up being penalized when the conditions are bad, which makes no sense to me. But enough said about that. I will turn the microphone over to whoever else wishes to ask questions.
Cameron.
Thanks, Tony. Just, I'm most interested to talk about enforcement, and I'll preface by saying I'm fine with repealing our ordinance and sort of deferring to Cal Water. But one of the things that we did in creating the ordinance was to create a mechanism by which we could fund enforcement at the city level. And so I am somewhat concerned about foregoing, you know, essentially, the opportunity to do that. And so you touched a little bit on enforcement, but I want to ask some, kind of some basic questions. So how many customers does Cal Water have?
In the Bay Shore District, we have over 52,000 service connections.
Okay. And is that, so when you talk about creating a drought team of 20 individuals, is that to address those 52,000 customers?
In the state of California, we have over 2 million.
So the 20 people is designed, really, to focus on the 2 million customers?
That's correct.
And, you know, one of the things that you talked about was that San Carlos is doing really well. Would you consider San Carlos a relatively low priority from enforcement, or where does it sit in kind of the overall hierarchy of all your customers?
Absolutely not. And the reason why I say that is, we have over 50 employees, I would say at least 30 that work around the San Carlos area in any particular day. We have trained our employees to recognize when somebody's wasting water and to act on it immediately unless they're on an emergency. And so not only are employees out in the field, but also our customers. And as you're aware, the customers of San Carlos, when they do see something that needs to be addressed, they will contact you, and they do a very good job at it, and we really appreciate it. And so every time we do get a phone call, or an email, or a text, we will go out immediately and/or as soon as possible to address that. So San Carlos is not a priority. We're...
Thank you, man. It's not a low priority.
Excuse me, not a low priority, I'm sorry. We're, absolutely not. We're, if somebody's wasting water, we're going to work with them.
And just so I understand the mechanism, so if a neighbor sees somebody, you know, wasting a ton of water, and they call a cops, then the police calls Cal Water and sends somebody out, and you guys issue a citation? Is that how it works? Or do our police officers, do citations? What I'm trying to get at, and this is also sort of a question for Greg and Tara, is if we repeal our ordinance, but it's the will of the council that we still want to contribute some resources to help with enforcement in our city, can we do that? Under the notion that we had essentially said, I don't know what's going on with the mic here, maybe move some cords out of the way. Under the notion that essentially the council had more or less, without actually appropriating the money, said that, you know, we wanted to spend city resources to enforce drought reduction measures, and, you know, I'm strongly in the belief that this is a serious emergency for our state, where everybody needs to pull their weight, Cal Water included and cities included. And I'm a bit concerned about saying, well, you know, Cal Water can kind of carry the ball for us here. So if we wanted to add some supplemental enforcement funds, can we do that?
Well, absent the enforcement provisions in the code, we wouldn't strictly be able to enforce, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't cooperate with Cal Water's efforts. We could have, which we've done, an education program to inform residents about the potential penalties and the need to conserve water. We could also act as someone, an agency that would be able to give warnings. If you continue to do this, we're going to, Cal Water will eventually enforce against you. So it's, I would sum it as education and warnings would be permissible in the absence of any kind of ordinance that we would have in place. And that might be consistent, it would be consistent and justified by the resolution that you passed, because strictly tonight, you wouldn't be eliminating the resolution declaring a drought emergency. It's just the ordinance provisions would no longer apply. So you'll still have a drought emergency, and in fact, that resolution's not on the agenda to be repealed. It just will have no enforcement teeth.
Right. Okay. Well, maybe just a final question for Tara. So I'm concerned that we're deferring to more stringent requirements, but we're reducing enforcement. And so therefore, despite the fact that, you know, the regulations will say, you know, you should conserve more water than our existing ordinance, the ability of anyone to enforce that may be reduced, and therefore, the net effect of what we're trying to accomplish may be undercut. Do you share that concern? If not, can you tell me why you don't share the concern?
Well, I'm actually encouraged by Cal Water's more aggressive, as it were, enforcement, because the city didn't have the ability to say, okay, you keep wasting water, we keep penalizing you financially, because that's the only thing the city had. But Cal Water can say, you know what, we're going to cut off your water, or we're going to do this, or, so there is more enforcement there. Now, stepping back, the intent was, since we've already initiated the outreach to the community about the emergency, and people are ready to call, they're actually calling Chris right now, we wanted to continue that process to allow people to call us and try to have a more smooth transition from our penalty system to Cal Water's, and also Cal Water's new schedule, 14.1, because what we had in our ordinance doesn't match at all what Cal Water's now doing. One of the things is the three days a week of watering. We would need to educate the community on that, and that's why the Hometown Days was a great opportunity for us to work together so that we could get that message out.
Sure. And I'm all for the community education component. I think, you know, to Chris, so people are calling, and today you're referring them to Cal Water, is that right? And, sorry, sorry to call on you, but I think the question is, I just want to ensure that we don't get into a situation in which we say, well, we no longer have any legal authority here because Cal Water's handling it, and so that, you know, I want to make sure that when calls come in, they are followed up on, and that we're being serious about it, and not just passing the buck.
Through the chair, may I just toss a suggestion in? Is there something that would prevent us, assuming Cal Water would be willing to do this, from allocating some funds for Cal Water to allocate a higher proportion of their enforcement staff to San Carlos?
You know, that's a good question I hadn't considered. I think, like we've talked about previously, and other actions where use of public funds was involved, we would identify a public purpose, which in this case would be drought and water conservation. I think staff would probably want to have the opportunity to study, you know, and work with Cal Water on how that program would work, whether it's necessary, depending on the resources, they actually are going to be dedicating to that. It might not be the money that the council would be willing theoretically to apply, might not be, make a big difference in their enforcement program. And so those are the thoughts I had, but I think you could do that if it was, from a policy standpoint, the council wanted to do that.
Sounds like we could at least give staff direction to go consider that and come back with something.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was leading up to, which is, I think it was the intent of council to provide resources for enforcement of drought, and, you know, I don't think, I think that essentially what we're doing is, you know, creating a legal framework that is more understandable, or et cetera, that's more easily enforceable. But I would like to, if my other two colleagues would agree, to ask staff to come back with proposals about how we could continue to supplement kind of enforcement within the city and not just rely on Cal Water as the sole source of enforcement.
I support that.
Mr. Mayor?
I agree. I think that's a good idea, and at a subsequent meeting, we also have four council members here who could weigh in on that as well. So I say we do it.
Great. Chris, did you want to just, yeah?
Maybe my two cents?
Yeah.
So yes, we are assisting Cal Water. We've already utilized their door knockers, for instance. I'm keeping a log of all the information requests we get, the courtesy notices that I've sent, in addition to the actual complaints that we've actually created, well, yeah, started a code enforcement on. So the idea is to kind of be somewhat of a messenger, hoping that that kind of gets, you know, the initial call addressed, and, you know, keeping a log of what we're taking in, but to be a partner with Tony and his crew.
Okay.
So that was kind of the intent, and also it emphasizes the importance of having, you know, 14-1, both of us utilizing that, so that we're delivering the same message.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, you had something else you wanted to contribute, or a question?
You know what, I sort of butted my way in there. Sorry, I should have turned the light off.
Okay. I don't have any speaker cards on this, but Bonnie, did you want to come up and make a comment? a comment? I'm going to amend your speaker card later.
Please amend it. Bonnie McClure's speaking as an individual rather than a Sierra Club, but with Sierra Club in the back of my mind, because conserving water. I just wanted to note that my son-in-law called the city and reported an overuse of water last week, or it might have even been, well, last week or maybe 10 days ago, and was told, "Oh, we can't do anything about that until May 15th, and you can call back" or something like that. And he was rather upset about that. And I hope that hasn't been. I hope that was just an off-the-cuff thing, because I'm worried if we don't have something passed now for enforcement until Cal Water starts. I mean, what's happening in between? You know, I mean, we're ready to save water now, so the way the city works, it takes two weeks and two weeks and two weeks to get something going. And you have a May 15th date that people have heard about. So I wonder what you can have in between, instead of just leaving it out there.
Greg, can you enlighten us on that? I mean, it's four more days, right?
Well, the current ordinance is in law, but the council provided direction not to begin enforcement after an extensive public education campaign, and that date was selected to be May 15th, in part for seasonal reasons. Maybe it was hopeful that we would have more rain between the time you enacted the ordinance and now, but that didn't happen. So technically, tonight, you would be introducing the repeal, then there'd be the adoption at your next meeting. And so technically, the repeal will not be effective until 30 days after your next meeting, which puts us well into June. We would technically have the ability to enforce, but I imagine that we would probably be, instead of enforcing our own rules, just continuing on the track to cooperate with Cal Water. But if we had an egregious violation, we would have the legal right to issue fines until the repeal took effect.
Okay. Did that change your thinking at all, Cameron?
No, but I mean, I echo Bonnie's concerns that it's frustrating, and that, you know, this is the kind of thing that makes people cynical about government, that, you know, you can't enforce the drought in the middle of the drought emergency because, you know, we're moving paper around. So, I mean, I would guess, I would just ask staff, you know, to... I mean, and I suspect what staff will do, as Chris said, is to continue to coordinate with Cal Water and make sure that these things are followed up on whether or not the ordinance is specifically directing enforcement.
All right. So we either need a motion...
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1489.
1489. Well, there's nice symmetry with that. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos repealing ordinance 1479 concerning municipal code section 8.10 that established water conservation measures in time of emergency or drought.
My second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more comment? Mark, and then Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just two comments, one to staff, and then one for future work. I'm going to vote to support this. Personally, I would prefer if we had just reversed the resolution rather than blown up the ordinance, because unfortunately, from everything I've been able to read, I think droughts are going to be more frequent going forward in California than they have been in the recent past. And it just would be nice to have to unwind the clock all the way back to where we have to reintroduce the ordinance and go through that. So I'm not sure how that came about, but I disagree with the judgment call that basically blows up the ordinance and not just repealing the resolution. The other point I wanted to make of a more constructive nature, sort of a little bit along the lines of what Cameron was talking about with enforcement. A few weeks ago, the diocese decided that we wanted to have an agendized topic to talk about ways to further increase water conservation, programs and ideas that we might want to fund as the city. And I hope we're still going to do that. And in voting for this, repealing this, I in no way, shape, or form want to not have that discussion. I want to have that discussion. So... But with those caveat, so I'm happy to support this.
Cameron? When your microphone stops.
Sorry about the static. I don't know. My phone is...
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. That's my phone. I'm going to support it too, but it's because we're agreeing to bring back a couple items, including enhanced enforcement. As I said, I think everybody's got to work together, and we need to step up with resources, just like Cal Water, the state, everybody needs to participate. And so, that's all I got to say.
Crystal?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. On a new business item, 10C, consideration of introducing an ordinance adding chapter 5.45 regulating delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed paper, plastic, or composite materials on private property in the city of San Carlos.
Through the chair, who's going to tell Mr. Casilli that we cut his water allotment to zero?
I'll do it. Sorry, Bob.
That's okay.
Okay. We have a report on this from Greg.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we are bringing back for reintroduction the handbill ordinance that was last brought to the council in early February. Since that time, there have been some fairly substantial changes to the proposed ordinance. The changes are... I have some notes here, just to kind of summarize those. The... First of all, the intent of this ordinance is to regulate the conduct of depositing materials where someone does not want to have them delivered on their property. And we provide notice in the ordinance by three potential methods to disseminators of such materials. It could either be on the refusal of consent registry that will be available online or in hard copy at City Hall. The person can post a sign on their property, which would be another method of notification. And then the third is to use the disseminator's own do-not-deliver or refusal of consent registry. So any one of those methods of notice will provide notice to the disseminator that an individual property owner does not want to have the defined handbills in the literature delivered to their property. Secondly, we added some findings to deal with some of the constitutional issues that have been raised, and address additional facts to support the city's ability to regulate these dissemination of handbills in the city. One of the other changes was, in addition to calling the violations of the ordinance an infraction, there's now the option of a civil penalty. We added some presumptions to the ordinance that state that certain activities will be presumed one way or another under the law, that will create rebuttable presumptions. The purpose of these presumptions is to provide disseminators with the ability to rebut the presumption of delivery. And I'll give you an example where delivery is prohibited. I'll give you an example where somebody's on the do-not-call, do-not... Excuse me, the refusal of consent registry, but they gave explicit consent to this person to deliver something. So we wanted to create these presumptions, so that if someone did happen to get a ticket, they could come to us and say, "Yeah, but I have this email from this resident who says, 'Yes, I want to make an exception for you that I can receive this information.'" So it seemed more reasonable to allow someone who happens to get a ticket or a civil citation that they have the ability to rebut the presumption. So we added those types of provisions in there. We added a 60-day review period. The old version had the refusal of consent effective the next day. Now disseminators have 60 days to review the registry without running afoul of the enforcement mechanisms. We did... I changed some of the exemptions in the language to refer back to the anti-litter provisions in the ordinance. So you'll recall, the exemptions were added last time to address political campaigns and nonprofits on the basis that they are infrequent and do not significantly contribute to the litter or nuisance problems in the city. They are also modeled after the federal do-not-call registry. It's almost identical to that language. But we added, in the interest of, one of the goals of the ordinance is to reduce litter and nuisance litter entering into our storm drains, exposing the city to potential fines for Clean Water Act violations, and possibly blowing into the wildlife refuges and open space areas around town and into our creeks. We wanted to make sure that we treated even those who are exempt from the do-not-registry... Do-not... Excuse me, I keep confusing that term, refusal of consent registry, that even the people that are exempt from that still have to comply with reasonable anti-litter provisions, such as attaching to doorknobs, attaching or securing the item so they will not blow around the neighborhood or accumulate in such a way that causes security issues. So we've added those types of issues. We did receive some correspondence, and the... From Telephone Book Trade Group, from the San Francisco Examiner Newspaper, and some others, many of the changes were included to attempt to address some of their concerns. I'm not sure if their concerns have been satisfied. There may be some members of those groups that are prepared to talk to you tonight. The Telephone Book Trade Group asked for a couple of changes, so I'm just going to underline those. What the changes they're requesting is that telephone books be removed from the definition of literature, and that there be an annual, in essence, an annual right to deliver without having to comply with the refusal of consent registry. It would be applied to all groups. It wouldn't just apply to telephone book disseminators, but it would, since telephone book companies generally deliver once a year, they would be within that element. And then finally, I did receive a comment just today from some public utilities that had some concern that perhaps we would want to add an exception for public utilities. But I think some of the language in the current ordinance before you would cover them, because it provides for an exemption for official notices. So I think the... Since PG&E and other public utilities, such as Cal Water that you've heard from, are operating under the CPC, they have orders and provisions that authorize them to provide notice. One of the things would be service calls. That's officially official notice of a service call or maintenance or something in somebody's backyard on an easement. Notwithstanding that, utilities generally have a right to access people's property without the notice, so it's just the notice itself, they had some concerns about that. So I said I'd bring that to your attention tonight. And tonight, again, it's time for reintroduction, so this is what some agencies call the first reading of the ordinance. So it's required to come back another time. You have the ability to make some fine tunings to this ordinance if you think what's before you needs some changes or clarification. It can be introduced with some of those changes or clarifications tonight, and then the next time, it would come back with those changes incorporated, if any were made. So that's the end of my presentation.
All right. Questions of Greg? None so far. We have a speaker card. Ed McGovern.
Good evening, council and mayor. Ed McGovern here. I'm representing the Local Search Association, which, as the city attorney said, is a trade organization that used to be called the Yellow Page Association, but they are a larger group of many more local disseminators of this type of information. And in addition, I'm actually here also to represent the many San Carlos businesses who do advertise in the Yellow Pages. Even in this digital age where we've all gone to smartphones and tablets, et cetera, the Yellow Pages is the second most utilized way to find local businesses in a community. Per the letter and language that the city attorney referenced, we... I hope you've all seen it. We would respectfully request the council exempt these annual publications from your ordinance. We do understand the intent is to eliminate the unsightly litter from your streets, but we don't believe that our publication is the source of that community frustration. These are annually delivered. They're obviously heavy. They're in plastic bags. There's a very specific way that they're delivered to the hinge side of a door so that people won't step on them and be injured when they leave. We also understand that there's some frustrations about the opt-out efforts and not being effective. I think, though, if you looked at what our organization has done, it's one of the most compliant ones in the whole country. It's called Yellow Pages Opt-Out, very easy for people to do. It's on Yellow Page Books. And in some communities, we actually work with the community to publicize that opt-out feature on the city's website, et cetera, so we'd be happy to do that as well. In addition, you know, I wanted to just mention that the association really has vigorously defended their right to what they believe is a free speech issue, and they have done it successfully in several communities. They would obviously hope to avoid that costly, time-consuming litigation for the city, for the association. You know, we're not... The only people really that benefit from that are the attorneys. No disrespect meant to the city attorney. And in fact, in the future, I talked to Councilman Johnson about this. These books may become obsolete, and certainly at some time in the future, just like VHS tapes and cassettes and other such items, they may certainly go the way... Off to the wayside, but we'd rather hope that the market would dictate that. That may even happen before, you know, if you move forward, this litigation even gets settled. So with that, we'd respectfully request to be exempted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number...
1483.
1483, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding chapter 5.45 regulating delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed paper, plastic, or composite materials on private property in the city of San Carlos.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Speakers, yes. Cameron?
Well, I just want to thank Greg for all of his efforts. You know, these are complicated, thorny issues, and I appreciate him putting in all the time and effort to work through them, because I think, you know, this is a fundamental quality-of-life issue. It's... And it's something that we hear about a lot from residents. And so I think, you know, you're probably one of the legal... And so I think, you know, you're probably one of the legal authorities on unsolicited marketing material now. I encourage you to maybe write a column or memo to distribute to your fellow city attorneys around the state in hopes that they might follow our lead and might have a united front. But thanks for all your effort on this, and I'm excited to see this move forward.
Okay. Bob?
I'm also probably going to be ending up voting for this, but I just wanted to look at my fellow council members and see if there was any interest in perhaps that exemption that Mr. McGovern indicated. And I can, realizing that with all this, we are leading the charge, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, but make sure that we also understand if later on, if it gets litigated, that there are, and maybe Mr. Rubin's going to correct me if I'm wrong, there's opportunities for, should we say, folks that might prevail in a court to come after us for their attorney's fees also.
That is one of the potential outcomes in any kind of litigation, that the prevailing party is entitled to their attorney's fees. And this type of litigation, that would be something that could be authorized or ordered by a court at the end of a litigation.
Just wanted to make sure everybody understands that. I don't, I don't know if there's any appetite for the exemption that Mr. McGovern indicated. So I don't know if there is one or not, so.
I'll respond to that after Mark speaks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second what Cameron said about Craig's research efforts in this area, and I actually like the idea. Maybe you could charge for your expertise and you could, you know, help to offset our legal bills. But in all seriousness, thank you, thank you again for working on this as hard as you did. It is a thorny issue. It is, like so many of the other things that we deal with, it is a matter of striking a balance, that sort of mythical balance that we always keep coming back to. I'm reasonably confident that we've done a decent job of trying to strike that balance here. Court may disagree with us someplace down the road. I think it's a reasonable, a reasonable shot to take, however, given the negative impact it's had on our community, as Cameron says, we've heard from many people. I would also like to point out that in thinking through this, I'll put out a call if there's anybody else in the community who would like to join me in potentially putting together a, sort of a public clearinghouse website for folks who might be interested in learning who the advertisers are in some of these throwaway newspapers and other marketing materials. Because, you know, the other way of approaching this too is to make it clear that potential customers are displeased at having these items left on their doorstep. And if, I think, if enough people were to stand up and push back on that, you might find that the advertisers would take care of this issue on our behalf. And that may be something worth doing even with the ordinance, because I certainly support doing the ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I, as I recall, we were, you know, we were responding to a lot of complaints from people who had issues with unwanted newspaper deliveries, newspapers left in driveways, newspapers that got wet, newspapers that ended up in the gutters and then the sewer systems or the storm drain system and clogging up everything. And my hope all along was that that's what we were going to do. We were going to have an ordinance that was going to address those things. I happen to agree with Bob. I think there really ought to be an exemption for the Yellow Pages. I never thought of the Yellow Pages as that much of a nuisance. I personally use the Yellow Pages less and less, just like everybody else. I really don't care for the, one of those Yellow Page publications. I should probably not name them by name, but they just go in my recycle bin. And, but the fact that they're packaged, they're next to the front door, they don't end up on driveways, and it would take a hurricane, I think, to blow them away. They don't end up in the storm drain system. I think we really ought to make an exemption or an exception for them. I would love to see that in the final ordinance. So if voting for this means that that exemption is not included, then I'm not inclined to vote for it. So Cameron, I see you want to say something else?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just provide sort of the counterargument, which is, you guys will recall that what we're doing here is allowing people to opt-out. Doesn't mean that the Yellow Pages can't be delivered in San Carlos. It just means that if somebody says, I don't want to receive the Yellow Pages, then they won't get it. And I think that's totally reasonable. I would, I would venture that, you know, the vast, vast, vast majority of Yellow Pages that are delivered go directly into the recycle bin these days. And, you know, it is a product that is, you know, is obsolete essentially. You know, when people look for businesses or look for phone numbers, they do it on the internet. When they make a phone call, you know, they can actually find the number in the phone. It's a very efficient way to do it. They don't need to go to a thick newsprint book to do it. So I, you know, I would say that if we, what we're, what we're trying to do in essence here is to allow people to regulate what marketing material is left at their homes. Congress has allowed people to regulate what phone calls they receive, that you can opt-off a do-not-call list. They regulate email spam, so you can unsubscribe from email lists. I don't think it's too much to ask for people to be able to say, hey, I don't want printed marketing material left at my house. And I would say to the concerns about litigation, we have lots of options down the road. So we can always choose not to defend ourselves, we can amend the ordinance, we can, we can take an honest look at what the costs benefits are. And if we decide that, hey, we're going to lose this, we can, we can make some changes. But what I would say is, based on the, you know, the very thorough research by Greg, we just don't know. There isn't a clear precedent in this case. And so, you know, we have to, we have to look at this kind of step by step. But we don't commit ourselves by voting for this to some, you know, big legal penalty. We have lots of options going forward.
Through the chair?
Yes, Bob.
I'm sorry. Greg, isn't, I'm reading 5.45.070, methods of distribution. It says any, you know, literature or handbills may be distributed to the city shall be done only in the manner prescribed in the following. Okay? Doesn't this cover, doesn't Item C cover that, the Yellow Pages? As long as it's bound up like it is and put next to the door or whatever else, as we've been talking about?
Seventy is intended to be the, if you, if you do deliver, this is what you have to do. So, so everybody who delivers these materials needs to comply with .070. But if you are on, if you, if a resident puts themselves on the refusal-of-consent registry, they can't deliver at all, not even using these methods.
I understand. Okay. So, which they can do now. Well, they can't really, I guess they could call up the Yellow Pages and say, we don't want them, and it'd be, maybe they might be delivered, maybe they wouldn't be. They probably would be because they just go house by house.
And remember, I put the rebuttable presumption in the ordinance that specifically references telephone books. So even if somebody is in the registry and they've given notice to the telephone company, yes, or the Telephone Book Trade Group, excuse me, that they want to receive the phone book, they will not be in violation of the ordinance. It just requires the, that property owner to give an express consent or receive it.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to second Cameron's, Cameron's comments, particularly the one where I think he quite correctly pointed out, what we're doing here is just giving people the opportunity to say no. We're not, we're not, this is deliberately designed not to be a blanket ban. It's, it is deliberately designed to have a fair amount of flexibility and, I would argue, a reasonable set of ways that a vendor can comply. But fundamentally, what we're trying to do is to provide some balance where individuals can choose to say, no, I don't want this material delivered to me. And, you know, apropos of Yellow Books, Yellow Pages, nothing against them, but I haven't done anything except look for a way to throw them in the recycling bin for the last decade. And I don't think I'm alone in that.
No, I don't think you are either. However, we do have people who are not on the internet. I'm probably making a presumption that many of them are older, but I really think that there ought to be that exemption in there. I'm going to ask, I'll ask Greg a question in a minute, but Mark, you wanted to say something else?
Well, actually, I, I want to make sure I understand what your concern is, Mr. Mayor, because, because, you know, the example that you use, and I agree with you, there, you know, in San Carlos, there are people who do not regularly have access to the internet and don't have smartphones and all that kind of stuff. But this ordinance will not keep, will not prevent them from getting the Yellow Pages. Because all they, in fact, they would have to take a special step to not get the Yellow Pages. Anybody who doesn't want to get the Yellow Pages has to take a special step. By default, they are going to continue to get the Yellow Pages, just like they do today. It's only, you know, those miscreants like me who might sign up and say, I don't want it anymore, so save me the trouble of throwing it in the recycle bin. So I just want to make sure I understand what your concern is.
Well, as I said, I agree with Bob. You know, the possibility of litigation, I think my, my issue is I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to just blatantly invite it. But having said that, we're, this ordinance is going to come back, right?
Yeah, this is the introduction. There'll be, it'll come back probably at your next meeting for adoption, but I don't know if it's been scheduled yet, so it could be, it could be the meeting after that.
It could be the meeting after that. And at that point, can it be amended?
You would have to reintroduce, if there's any amendments, at the second reading or the adoption agenda item. The process is always, at the introduction stage, that's the final language. And then unless it's, if it's changed later, you're reintroducing it, and then it has to go for adoption or second reading later.
What happens if it fails tonight?
If it fails tonight, the, it could come back if the council wants to have it come back, so when you have a full complement, that's one option, of council members present. You could, it could, it could, if, you know, sometimes it's a two-two tie and there's no action, it could come back because there was no action, and by default, you'd wait till the fifth person. It wouldn't actually be defeated if it was a two-two tie. It's just not approved. So it would probably come back when you had five members present.
Okay. I will admit, I mean, I see both sides here. I think this is an issue that's probably better settled by, by the full council. I think, I think Matt should be here. So I'll, I mean, not that I'm necessarily opposed to it, but I still have that issue with the Yellow Pages. I never thought that it ought to be included, but with a, with a two-two tie tonight, it'll, it'll come back, right? It'll be unsettled. Okay.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry?
Absolutely. Call for a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do it. That's what I was about to say. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
No.
All right. So...
Okay, so there's no action, but I, does the, I'm just going to ask the question, by that vote, does the council want it to come back at a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Ten D. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the law enforcement services agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department for July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020, and the fiscal year 2016. Payment of $7,656,264 for police services. Chief Rothus.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, member of the City Council, Greg Rothus, police chief. We're here before you tonight on this police services contract. Unfortunately, due to no fault of our own, Rebecca Mendenhall was supposed to make this presentation with me tonight and couldn't be here, so we hope she gets way better very quickly. So this is, just to renew the five-year contract, and Councilmember Grisilli remembers all of this all too painfully well, but I just wanted to do a quick overview of how we, we ever got to that position in the first place. In 2005, when I became the police chief in San Carlos, that was basically what our service model looked like. We had a really strong core services of public safety, officer safety, emergency response. And on the outer core, outer kind of circles, we really had a lot of quality-of-life and desirable services. We had a DARE program, a PAL program. We had Citizens Police Academy. We were involved in child safety seat inspections. But over the, the next five years, the budget really took a turn south, and a lot of cuts occurred to the police department. So that in 2010, that's what the police department looked like. We had fundamental core and core support, but we came to a point in 2010 where the council was forced to possibly make decisions that would undermine the core of the police department. Council directed staff to go out and take a look at possible options for police services, including the concept of contracting out. And after about, probably about a year of working through that and a very difficult decision by council, council voted 5-0 to contract with the sheriff's office. And since that time, we've been able to restore a lot of services. We've been able to restore not only one dedicated traffic deputy, but based upon the decision of this council to add a second traffic deputy. We have school resource officers in the school. We've restored our Sheriff's Activities League program. It used to be called PAL, we had the police department, but in Sheriff's, it's called Sheriff's Activities League, so it's S.A.L. We have Citizens Police Academy. We have an administrative sergeant again, and that's valuable because it keeps our other sergeants in the field and not inside doing paperwork. The community policing has been excellent. You've seen, at all kinds of community events and drives, you've seen them there. And this city has the full weight of all the sheriff's resources. We had an event in open house just last Saturday where a lot of sheriff's resources were out in the parking lot. We had 200-plus members of the community come through and see that and see the open house here. And we're just, we are the largest law enforcement agency in the county, one of the largest on the peninsula. We have 700 employees. We're resource-rich, and San Carlos can get any of that anytime they need it. In terms of our performance, some of the, there were some performance concerns that obviously when we looked at contracting out, one was what would, the crime rate would go up. That's not true. The crime rate has gone down a little bit. I'm not going to give the sheriff's office credit for that. It just happens up and down, because then I'd have to take the blame when it went up. So our response times are still low. They're still, you know, under five minutes. It's very difficult for cities to be under four minutes. It's almost unheard of for averaging that, so our response times are very good. There was concern about somehow the city's identity would be lost if we didn't have our own police department. That's not happened. I think you can argue that it's improved over the last five years, not because of the sheriff's office, but because there's more to a city than whether or not that, that city just name is on the car. We are connected to this community, the sheriff's office. We have become part of the fiber of this community in terms of community policing. Policing, and I think a lot of you have heard comments about, that a lot of our deputies either live in town, grew up in town, and we're just very connected. Local control, I think there was a concern about the loss of local control. You know, I can tell you that every time the city manager calls me and tells me to come up to his office and do something, I pretty much do that, you know? He's certainly my boss, and I've had council members, some of you, call me, ask me for things, and so I don't think you have to worry about local control. You know where to find me and certainly not shy about asking for anything, so. We've been doing citizen satisfaction surveys consistently, and we have a consistent rate of about, over 98% satisfaction with what we're doing. And then last but not least, all of this stuff, which is really as robust or more robust than any municipal PD our size, and we've done that to savings that I think conservatively can say is $10 million to this city over five years, that would have been spent on police services had we not contracted out or had this council not made that very difficult decision at that time to contract out. And so that's where we are right now. We're looking at renewing the contract, possibility of renewing that contract for five years. They have the contract here at approximately $7.6 million. And if you look at the report, Rebecca Mendenhall did some work on some of the financials and some comparisons, and you can see a couple of things that are important with respect to our, our financials as it relates to other benchmark cities. Number one, it's, it's lower than overall on these cities that are comparable size. I can tell you, we've done work on per capita cost of police services, and I think there might be only one municipal police department in San Mateo County that has a lower per capita police services than we do. And then you take a look at the growth rate of the cost of police services in this chart, and you can see that the sheriff's, that San Carlos really has the slowest growth rate of the cost of services. And that was another thing that was of concern to the city at that time. So the contract really has allowed the, the city to have a full complement of police services, to control their costs, to keep their cost per capita among the lowest in the county. And we are ready to do it again for five more years, if you'll let us.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Questions? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Greg. Always good to hear from you, chief. One thing, just quickly, is, do you happen to, can you give us a summary of what, if any, changes were in the agreement, the renegotiated agreement? In other words, if there was a red line version, what got changed? Maybe nothing did. I don't know.
Probably, it was basically, you know, Rebecca really wanted to tighten up some of the language with respect to timing of payments and things like that. Operationally, nothing. But I know that Rebecca was doing some cleanup in this, and it was fine. I mean, the county had no problem with it. But that was pretty much it, from what I remember. We've changed the contract over the course of five years in a few areas, but this contract, not a lot.
Okay. Can I ask just for my own information, can staff provide a red line of the two, of the agreement at some point offline?
Absolutely. No, not a problem.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to see it. Not that I don't believe you, chief, I just.
No, I know the city attorney saw it as well, and I don't think there's really anything substantive operationally, correct? No.
There was not anything operationally. There was just a few typos and things of that nature, and a paragraph that we added that was bringing out a prior amendment and just bringing it into the body of the agreement.
Yeah, I tried to do it manually by comparing the old agreement to the new, but it's always easier with the red line. So that's why I like to see those things. The, my other, second question, chief, is, I think when I asked you this a couple of years ago, are you still satisfied you're getting your pick of deputies when you need to pick, you know, replace positions in San Carlos? We still a reasonably attractive place to work?
Yeah, this is a great place to work. People like it here. The facility's great. The community is great. I have deputies come up to me and tell me, man, these, how nice the people in the community are to them, how, what nice things they say to them. In some of the international news with related to police relations over the past year, it's been tough for this profession. But in this year, we've had a lot of people come up to our officers, our deputies, and tell them how much they appreciate them. That part's been very good. I've worked in a lot of communities. I can tell you, this is the most appreciative community I've ever policed. And they feel that as well. Obviously, the facility's pretty nice. You've seen it. The gym's pretty nice. You've seen that. They have not a lot to complain about in terms of facilities. It's actually, and also, it's actually one of our busiest places. Believe it or not, we have more police work here than even in unincorporated Redwood City. Unincorporated city is more violent, but we have more calls, more crime, more things going on here, and a lot of interesting stuff. So it's an interesting place for them to work. And we do get good people.
Good. And last question is sort of the inverse of that one. Looking at this from the sheriff's department perspective, is the contractual relationship meeting, are they getting out of it what they wanted to get out of it?
Yeah, I think the sheriff's office is better because of it. I think one of the things is we, you know, the city's become a client to us, an important client. And the sheriff's office has always been a good organization. But I think knowing that we've got to meet a high bar. I said this community's appreciative, but I forgot to tell you, they also have a very high bar. So we know in this community, we have to meet a high bar. And so we have to run a tight ship and do a good job and make sure that we meet that bar. And it's kept us pretty tight operationally, and I think really made us a better organization. I think we infused a lot of good people into that organization. People like, you know, people like Captain, who now is Captain Mark Robbins, who runs corrections for the sheriff's office. Our former records supervisor, Jenna McAlpin, who runs the whole records division for the sheriff's office. So they made out in terms of personnel. And, you know, we ended up with other contract cities, as Big Orin, Milbrae, Hack Moon Bay, and others knocking at the door on a couple occasions. So it's been a great, great thing for the sheriff's office.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Cameron?
Thanks, Greg. I think the numbers and the results speak for themselves. So, you know, I think everyone in the community should be proud of what we've done here. My question is, if more cities in the county go with the sheriff's office, do you have a sense of what that has, what implications that has for the cost to San Carlos? Is it better for, you know, should San Carlos be out there talking to our neighboring cities, saying, "Hey, this is a great model for you because it's going to reduce costs for us"? Or does it not matter?
Well, I think, I think that if other cities joined, there were ways for us to save costs across the board for all the cities, including San Carlos. In terms of regionalizing leadership and stuff like that, we could do that. Sharing more resources, we could do that. And so there's a lot of ways that we could add savings. What we try to do, for reasons that might be obvious, is stay out of that business of selling ourselves to other communities. If they want to talk to us, we're here for them. We believe that we can, we can do a fantastic job policing communities. I think we've shown it here and in other places. We can do it for cheaper and, I think, and restore services. So the answer to your question is, yes, they could save. And whether the city should do that or not, I'll leave that up to the city.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, I think the, to me, Exhibit A of what a wonderful department we have was the Eaton Park issue a couple of months ago. We had a community meeting. We had a lot of concerned residents there. You just did a fantastic job in communicating with them, listening to them, telling them, you know, that the city's one of the safest in the county. And I came away from that meeting, I didn't think I could be more impressed, but I was. So just my heartfelt thanks. I think you guys do a fantastic job, day in and day out. I know that my neighbors who live on St. Francis, as I drive between my street and El Camino, are more appreciative because even though I haven't gotten a ticket, I'm much more conscious that there might be an officer station there. So I do drive a lot slower. Maybe it's old age, who knows? But anyway, thanks, Greg.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I mean, we will obviously sit down and talk to any neighborhood or people that have issues and problems like the Eaton Park residents did and their concerns. We've done that with Councilmember Obert in some of the traffic areas, that he's helped shepherd in terms of traffic safety in the community. And we're happy to do it again to anybody that needs us.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt. Did Bob have questions?
Uh, yes, he did.
I just wanted to say, in 10 years, you make a lot of decisions, but I think this was one of the best ones we ever made. I mean, I don't second-guess myself on this one, ever. So, thanks, chief.
And for those who watched it, we could see, you could see how painful it was to go through it for the council members, you know. And I'm glad, I'm really glad that we were able to deliver. So.
Great. And also, my thanks to Bob for his part on that, because I was at those meetings when those decisions were made and heard some comments in the audience that were uncomfortable to hear. Okay, Mark, is there something else you want to say? Or were you just going to make the motion?
I was about ready to say, I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
53.
53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the law enforcement services agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2020, and the fiscal year 2016, payment of $7,656,264 precisely for police services.
I second.
Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I believe we adjourn.